The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone. I extend a warm welcome to all who are following this, the eighth public hearing of the Royal Commission's Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. This hearing will examine the experiences of First Nations people with disability and their families in contact with child protection systems. I therefore extend a particular welcome to all First Nations people who are following or will follow this hearing. I shall now ask Commissioner Andrew Mason, O A M, to perform the acknowledgement of country and to make an opening statement. Commissioner Mason.
We acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Nanana, jokoru runka, kalkarani, arungo, koari pa, chaaro. Nenani jatko, chura, mura, nango. We recognise Mechen Brisbane. Nanana, woranka ni, mura, Mechen ya Brisbane ta. We recognise the country, north and south of the Brisbane River, as the home of the Jiribor and Javira nations. Nanana, ngo kanta na ni, karo, panya, Brisbane River ya. Alinjara, mono, okari ra, arungo, mura rija, chura, nenanya. Mono, goari, nenani, Jiribor ya mono Javira na. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Iora nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders, parents and young people with disability. This hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations parents with disability and their experiences with child protection systems across Australia. For First Nations viewers, please note that the evidence will describe removal. And if the evidence raises concerns for you, please contact the National Counselling and Referral Service on 1-800-421-468. You can also contact Lifeline, 131114, beyond blue, on 1300-224-636, or your local Aboriginal medical services for social and emotional wellbeing support. Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge that in my remarks, I'm going to mention two First Nations elders with disability who have passed away. Uncle Paul Calcott, our ajuri elder, artist and disability advocate, explained his perspective on what matters most to people with disability as they engage with the Disability Royal Commission, which he put into a piece of artwork. It is respectful listening. In the artwork, he implored the Royal Commission to understand the violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation that First Nations people with disability are experiencing by listening and walking with them. And not to do it in a way where the Royal Commission has decided on the answer, but to listen with the intent to understand, to do it respectfully, so we cut through to the things that matter most in the solutions we will eventually propose. Listening is in the oral tradition of First Nations peoples. It is how we exercise our authority and see and hear the authority in others. This week, we will hear First Nations people with disability speak with cultural authority about growing up and living in Australia as First Nations people, as First Nations people with disability and as Australian citizens. This intersectionality is important to mention at the beginning of this hearing because First Nations people with disability walk in three worlds: the First Nations world, the disability world, and as Australians in Australian society. This combination means they are more likely to both experience racism and ableism. That unfortunate coalescence can and does have far-reaching impacts. The child protection system is probably the setting more than most that potentially sets into motion deep and lasting ripples on First Nations parents with disability, on grandparents and on the life of a child and their siblings. Decisions made by child protection services can be life-altering for parents with disability. In past inquiries, we have heard about the experiences of children in the child protection system, but rarely heard about the experiences of First Nations parents with disability. However, the examination of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations parents with disability and their interaction with the child protection system are experiences that have largely been invisible in past inquiries. This week, this changes. This week, we will hear stories of First Nations parents with disability and their attitudes and their attributes of resilience, courage, persistence and about their love for their children. We will also hear about their experiences of how race, disability and interacting with Australian systems in child protection has given them experiences that are unique to them. The roles and responsibilities of advocates, disability service providers, peak bodies, legal services run by First Nations and non-indigenous organisations is an important part of this story. This is because their engagement has the potential to be transformational, to be one of positive synergy for First Nations parents with disability. The word synergy means the interaction of two parts or more combining to produce a greater impact than what they could do on their own. In summary, it means that in some instances in service provision, one plus one can equal three. We will hear this week some parents share their experiences and it will be clear they have had an experience of positive synergy. For others, some experiences may be more transactional, so one plus one equals two. And for some, their experiences have been one of deficit, that even with the effort they have given, parents may feel things have gone backwards. This week, when these stories are told in the company of other stories, we will have the opportunity to see single stories join with others to become collective stories. It's important we do this because these collective stories have the power to uncover patterns and potentially the attitudes behind these patterns. Auntie Gail Rankin and Uncle Lester Boscott, O A M, were two First Nations elders and warriors who fought passionately for First Nations people with disability until their passing. If they were here today, I'm sure they would say, "Put First Nations people with disability at the centre of your listening and thinking and let your listening and thinking be centred by First Nations people with disability." Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason, for your statement. Now me pleased to express the deep appreciation of the Royal Commission for your tireless work in ensuring that the voices of First Nations people with disability are listened to and heeded. I wish to pay my respects to the traditional owners of the land on which I am located, the Gadigal people of the Iora nation. I also acknowledge the First Nations people who will give evidence during this week and all First Nations people following these proceedings on our webcast. We hope that this hearing will encourage more First Nations people with disability and their families to come forward with their stories. As Commissioner Mason has just said and as Uncle Paul's beautiful artwork illustrates, we are committed to respectful listening to all people with disability who are prepared to engage with us. As has been the case with the last three public hearings conducted by the Royal Commission, because of the restrictions resulting from COVID-19 pandemic, this will be a virtual hearing. On this occasion, I am joined by Commissioners Rosalind Atkinson, A O, and Commissioner Mason and Commissioner Alistair McEwan, A M. Commissioners Atkinson and Mason are present in the Royal Commission's hearing room in Brisbane, while Commissioner McEwan and I are in the Royal Commission's premises in Sydney. Senior counsel assisting the Royal Commission at this hearing are Mr Lincoln Crowley, Q C, and Dr Kerry Melafont, Q C. They appear with Ms Elizabeth Bennett and Mr Ben Power of Council. They are ably assisted by Brisbane barrister Ms Evelino Tarago, a proud Wong Kamadla woman. Counsel will participate in the proceedings from the Brisbane hearing room, except for Ms Bennett, who will appear by video link from Melbourne. Legal representatives of the parties given leave to appear will participate in the hearing either remotely or in person in the Brisbane hearing room. Their appearances will be announced shortly. These proceedings can be followed on the webcast available on the Royal Commission's website. As with all our hearings, an Auslan English interpretation will be visible on the webcast. Our Auslan interpreters will be translating in both the Brisbane and Sydney hearing rooms. During the course of this hearing, we expect to hear from about 25 witnesses over five days. They include First Nations people with disability who have had direct experience with the child protection systems in various parts of Australia. We shall hear from the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Social Justice Commissioner of the Australian Human Rights Commission and from First Nations children's commissioners from several Australian jurisdictions. We shall also hear from First Nations child protection organisations, community legal centres and disability rights organisations, academic experts, advocates and government witnesses. Most witnesses will give their evidence remotely, but some will give their evidence in the Brisbane hearing room. As is inevitable, in the age of pandemic, the best laid plans are always at risk of being disrupted. Some witnesses have kindly agreed to travel from Adelaide to Brisbane to give evidence in person, but that plan has had to be abandoned because of the resurgence of coronavirus in Adelaide. Nevertheless, using the wonders of technology, we shall still hear from them. Of the 18 non-government witnesses who will give oral evidence at this hearing, 12 identify as a First Nations person. Mr Crowley will shortly provide further details in his opening statement about the nature of evidence that witnesses are likely to give during the week. We had originally intended to hold the first hearing addressing issues of particular importance to First Nations people with disability in May 2020. That hearing was to be conducted in the Northern Territory and the subject matter was to be the experiences of First Nations people with disability in remote areas. The decision to hold an early hearing on these issues reflected the direction contained in the Royal Commission's Terms of Reference, requiring us to have regard to the fact that specific experiences of violence against and abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability are multi-layered and are influenced by experiences associated with race, including the particular situation of First Nations people. Unfortunately, the travel restrictions imposed as a result of COVID-19 forced the postponement of the hearing planned for May. We hope to hold that hearing once travel restrictions are entirely lifted and the threat from coronavirus has receded. The Royal Commission has always intended to investigate the interaction between First Nations people with disability and the child protection systems of the Australian states and territories. It has been clear from an early stage of the Royal Commission's work that this is a major concern for First Nations people with disability. It's not at all difficult to understand why this is a topic of great concern, especially to First Nations people. Several of the statements from witnesses that will be tendered during the hearing refer to a recent report of the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare entitled Child Protection in Australia 2018-2019. The institute, the AIHW, records that in 2018-2019, 51,500 First Nations children received child protection services. This is a rate of 156 per 100,000 First Nations children, eight times the rate for non-indigenous children. Of these First Nation children, nearly one-third were under the age of five. The rate of First Nations children receiving child protection services actually increased from 134 per 1,000 in 2014, 15, to 156 per 1,000 in 2018-2019. In the same year, that is 2018-2019, one in 26 First Nations children were the subject of substantiations. That is, a finding made after investigation that there is reasonable cause to believe that a child has been, is being or is likely to be abused, neglected or otherwise harmed. First Nations children were six times more likely to be the subject of a substantiation as non-indigenous children. On 30th of June 2019, approximately 30,300 children in Australia were in long term out of home care, that is, for a period of more than two years. Of these, over 40% were First Nations children. The data also suggests, as the statement from Professor Claire Tilbury indicates, that not only do First Nations children enter care at much higher rates than non-indigenous children, they are subject to much more intrusive interventions and they stay longer in care. It does seem that despite all the reports and all the programmes that have sought to address First Nations disadvantage, things have actually gone backwards in recent years. AIHW states that the reasons for over-representation of First Nations children in child protection systems and substantiations are complex, that they include: the legacy of past policies of forced removal; the intergenerational effects of previous separations from family and culture; the effect of poverty on First Nations families; perceptions resulting from cultural differences in child-rearing practices. These themes are by no means unfamiliar in the discourse about the place of First Nations people in this country and they will be reiterated in much of the evidence that we will hear this week. The evidence will tell us that there is very limited data available on the numbers and proportions of children in state and territory child protection systems whose parents are First Nations people with disability. But there is general agreement that First Nations parents with disability are particularly at risk of having their children removed and placed in care. This is hardly surprising because, as Commissioner Mason has pointed out, they face intersecting and compounding disadvantages, even beyond those experienced by other First Nations parents. Part of our task this week is to examine how these disadvantages can be addressed. We shall do so, as Mr Crowley will explain, having regard to Article 23 of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, which provides that no child is to be separated from parents on the basis of the disability of either the child or one or both of the parents. We need to consider, among many other things, discriminatory practices by reporters of suspected neglect and by some child welfare workers; a lack of cultural sensitivity by seeing, for example, child-rearing practices as deficits rather than as promoting cultural strength; assessment criteria that may be appropriate for non-indigenous people but not for First Nations people; the assumption frequently made that disability equates to poor parenting and the failures to provide accessible and culturally safe support services to First Nations people seeking to overcome the intergenerational loss of parenting skills. We must also consider how information about parents with disability in contact with child protection services is gathered and how that information is used, both at a systemic and case management level. None of this is to deny the genuine efforts have been made to improve Australia's deeply troubling record. We shall hear, for example, of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principles. They are: prevention, partnership, connection, participation and placement. These principles have been incorporated to varying extents in state legislation. I would like to add something to this that's based on work that I did 45 years ago. In 1975, I presented a report to the Commonwealth Government as the Commissioner for Law and Poverty on the Australian Government Commission for Poverty. Chapter 10 of that report was entitled Aboriginals and the Law. Terminology used 45 years ago was somewhat different from the terminology used today. In chapter 10 of that report, I addressed, as best I could, and I'm quoting, "the variety of disadvantages that are deeply rooted in history and the attitudes of the white community. To overcome these disadvantages in the long term, it will be necessary to go beyond legal reforms into the realm of economic and political power." The chapter in the Law and Poverty Report considered such pressing issues as the gross over-representation of indigenous people in custody; the survival of discriminatory laws, official practices and racist social attitudes that created multiple forms of disadvantage and denied indigenous people fundamental human rights; and the unfairness indigenous people routinely encountered in their dealings with the justice system, particularly in relation to sentencing for criminal offences. Among other things, that chapter argued for a transfer of power to indigenous people to ensure that they could determine their own future and have genuine freedom of choice. How little it seems has changed in 45 years. This week is an opportunity to move along a path that has been marked out for decades but has not been sufficiently travelled. The hearing marks a new and significant phase in the work of the Royal Commission and in the contributions of First Nations people with disability to that work. The issues we shall confront this week and some of the evidence we'll be confronting are not simple to resolve. On the contrary, like many matters within our Terms of Reference, they are very complex and very challenging. That is why this Royal Commission is not a sprint but a marathon and why we cannot rush to judgment. Mr Crowley, perhaps we could take appearances and then I invite you to make an opening statement.
Miss Commissioners, my name is Lincoln Crowley, Q C, and this hearing up here with Dr Melafont, Q C, and Ms Bennett via A V L from Victoria, and Mr Power of Council. We are instructed by the Office of the Assistant to the Royal Commission.
Thank you. Perhaps if you make your opening statement and then we will take the other appearances after you have finished.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioners, we acknowledge and pay our respects to the traditional custodians of various lands on which we participate in this public hearing. We pay our respects to First Nation elders, past, present and emerging, as well to all First Nations people involved in and following this public hearing. This is the eighth public hearing of the Royal Commission. It is, however, the first of a series of public hearings that will specifically focus on the experiences of First Nations people with disability. This hearing will be conducted over five days, commencing today and concluding on Friday, 27 November. This hearing will examine the experiences of First Nations people with disability in contact with child protection systems. It does so within the terms of Article 23 of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability in mind and in particular, Item 4 of Article 23, which provides, "State parties shall ensure that a child should not be separated from his or her parents against their will, except when competent authorities, subject to judicial review, determine in accordance with applicable law and procedures that such separation is necessary for the best interests of the child. In no case shall a child be separated from parents on the basis of disability by either the child or one or both of the parents." As we've heard, this hearing is being held in Brisbane and Sydney and while the hearing rooms are not open to the general public due to COVID restrictions, the hearing can be followed on web screen on the Disability Royal Commission website. Some witnesses will give evidence in person from Brisbane in the hearing room and others will give evidence via A V L link and some others by pre-recorded evidence. The manner in which each First Nations witness varies in the way they give their evidence depending on the particular circumstances and the individual wishes of those witnesses. Our Terms of Reference expressly require the Royal Commission to have particular regard to the experiences of First Nations people with disability. It's not surprising they do so, given the observations made by Commissioner Mason in the first public hearing, which were: First Nations people are already marginalised in the Australian community. Having a disability makes them part of a marginalised group within a marginalised group. They experience racism and ethnocentrism like other First Nation brothers and sisters experience. However, they see, hear and feel a greater level of discrimination above what I and other brothers and sisters experience because they have a disability. Thus, inquiring into the issues facing First Nations people with disability is a specific priority of the Disability Royal Commission. The issues have come and continue to come from our community as we listen to First Nation voices. To identify the key issues of concern for community, we have reviewed all material received by the Royal Commission through private sessions, submissions, responses to issues paper, First Nation-specific workshops and all forms of community engagement and through the advice, guidance and wisdom of the First Nations People Strategic Advisory Group. We have also engaged in close consultation with the First Nations community. Initially, this involved in-person engagements in urban, rural, remote and very remote areas of Australia. I have had the privilege of being personally involved in direct engagement with First Nation people with disability, their communities, their elders, leaders and representative bodies. Through these consultations, I was repeatedly told that First Nations people with disability are not getting the supports they need and that neglect of these needs is occurring on a systemic basis. The pandemic has had a significant impact on our ability to engage in person with the community. However, we have remained committed to the important task of bringing forward the experiences and stories of First Nations people with disability into this inquiry, to make loud the silence voice, and we have altered the means and methods of our engagement amid this to continue. The Disability Royal Commission needs to hear the stories of First Nations people told by First Nations people. The Commission acknowledges that understanding those stories comes through listening respectfully and honestly and treating First Nations people who have the courage to tell their stories with dignity. And that's what this week is about. It's a hearing, not just speaking. But we can only hope to bring about a better future for First Nations people with disability if First Nations people come forward to be heard through giving evidence at public hearings. The Commission therefore encourages all First Nations people, particularly those with lived experience as First Nations people with disability, who have something to say about the issues the Commission will examine in later public hearings, to speak up and they will be heard. Public hearings are only one aspect of the work the Disability Royal Commission does, but they're an important aspect. They provide the chance for the public to hear First Nation voices speak of their experiences with cultural authority and knowledge and they enable those voices to be amplified. This hearing continues a journey, being the eighth public hearing of the Commission, in which issues facing First Nations people with disability have already been raised. But, as I observed before, this is the first of the First Nation-specific public hearings and it's the beginning of what we hope will be a journey with a purpose. The ultimate purpose is to bring positive change to the lives of our mob, First Nations people with disability who... First Nations people with disability who experience or are at risk of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation because they are First Nations people with disability. All the Commission hearing staff and counsel assisting are dedicated to the task of assisting the Commissioners to examine the issues and identify the challenges and concerns of First Nations people with disability, to understand what needs to change and why it must change, and to have the courage to make the necessary recommendations that will bring that change. This hearing, public hearing number eight, will hear First Nations people tell their stories and share their knowledge of their experiences and interactions as First Nations parents with disability in contact with child protection systems. The hearing will speak to the importance of culture and First Nations family, and we hope to shine a light on the stark reality of overrepresentation of First Nations families and children in child protection systems today. The Australian Bureau of Statistics reported that 22% of First Nations children have disability compared to 8% in the general population. In adulthood, that increases to 48% of First Nations adults aged 18 and over, compared to 13% in the general population. According to the most recent report of the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare issued on child protection in Australia, as of 30 June 2019, First Nations children were almost eight times as likely as non-Indigenous children to have received child protection services. That is 156 per 1,000 children compared to 21 per 1,000 respectively. And First Nations children were nearly 11 times as likely as non-Indigenous children to be living in out-of-home care. In the course of preparing this hearing, I had the privilege of speaking to Aunty Jenny Swan and Aunty Suellen Ty from Grandmothers Against Removal New South Wales. And our conversation was recorded, and I would like to share now with you one of the powerful messages that they shared with me. If we could have please the excerpt from Aunty Jenny speaking, please. Play it.
What we advocate for is our children to be with their families in culture, because culture is a lived experience, and whether they've got a disability or not. Culture is a lived experience, and that's what we advocate, because too many of our kids are being taken. You know, we've got higher rates than the Stalin generation now. I think it's 11 times higher than the Stalin generation. That's never stopped. Names have changed, policies have changed, but that's never stopped.
Despite the overrepresentation of First Nations people in the child protection system and the prevalence of disability for First Nation adults, the specific experience of First Nations parents with disability who are in contact with child protection systems has until now been underexplored. The focus of this hearing will be on the question of whether First Nations parents with disability and their families are exposed to a higher likelihood of statutory intervention by child protection systems because they are First Nations persons with disability. This is a difficult and sensitive topic for our community, and at this stage, I wish to advise First Nations people who are watching or listening to this hearing that the evidence will describe removal, and respectfully acknowledge that hearing such evidence may be difficult. I will later provide details of the support services available. I also note that in the course of this week, we may hear the names of deceased First Nations people. Related to the question I spoke of a moment ago, the reasons, causes and effects of statutory intervention and child removal for First Nations people with disability. This hearing will examine those issues individually and systemically. In doing so, the Commission acknowledges that immediate factors that are often relied upon to justify the removal of First Nations children from their parents cannot be considered in isolation from other socio-economic factors such as poverty, lack of housing and family violence, and they cannot be examined without acknowledging the pervasive and damaging effects of historical policies, actions and events commencing with colonisation that have caused personal and cultural trauma for past generations and which still continue to be experienced today for First Nations people. At this point, I'd like to confront the real and important issue of inquiry fatigue for First Nations people. During my involvement in direct engagement with the community, I've been repeatedly told by First Nations people that they are tired, they're fatigued by inquiry. The community is tired of report after report being provided to government that does not translate to action. We know that we are asking First Nations people with disability and their families and their communities to come forward and share their experience with us, and that this is significant. In evidence, we will hear from Commissioner Natalie Lewis, who is a First Nations Commissioner for the Queensland Family and Children's Commission, and will hear her retell her experience of inquiry fatigue. Commissioner Lewis will say, "As an Aboriginal woman and professional committed to social justice, the number of recommendations from commissions of inquiry, Royal Commissions and reviews about us that have remained unimplemented or implemented in ways that are far removed from the original intent is both profoundly personal and professionally exhausting." The Royal Commission's interim report, published on 30 October 2020, describes the experiences of harm across many settings of First Nations people with disability and the barriers to their safety, wellbeing and inclusion. First Nation people with disability have told us their experiences are often compounded by multi-layered disadvantage associated with colonisation, poverty, chronic health conditions, racism, intergenerational trauma and a lack of culturally appropriate services. The interim report tells us that many First Nations people do not identify themselves or their children as a person with disability, which may reflect their own experiences of stigma and shame, or gaps in their knowledge and the inaccessibility of current systems. For First Nations people, disability may be seen as another issue to manage on the spectrum of disadvantage, and so may not receive the attention it needs. The interim report also presents stories First Nations people have shared with the Royal Commission, highlighting how caring and cultural obligations are strong in their communities. They have told us these obligations are a key consideration in providing support and responses to experiences of violence and abuse, including to address the limited availability, culturally safe and trauma-informed services to help First Nations people with disability experiencing domestic and family violence. First Nations people have also said they do not feel comfortable raising these matters with the police or child protection services. In developing this hearing, our intention is to consider whether disability status may be a silent causal factor, increasing the likelihood of child removal, First Nation parents, and contributing to the overrepresentation of First Nations children in out-of-home care in Australia. Some of the issues we'll be considering in the course of this hearing are whether there is recording and data for First Nations people with disability in contact with child protection systems across the country, whether early intervention exists, and if so, if it's practice? And if that is the case, how, when and why that happens? This was one of the issues that the Grandmothers Against Removal New South Wales group shared their thoughts with me about. Their concern was that if there are services available, they seem only to be available once you're in the system, in the department system. Aunty Suellen Ty expressed in these words, and I'll read what she said. "We talk about the gate. The gate only swings one way, in the sense that it prevents you from being proactive. You cannot walk off the street, walk through a door to a service, one that is identified or acknowledged by the department. You can't walk into a service unless you're on the books. You can't be proactive." Other issues we will consider include the assessment and identification of disability in First Nations parents, the supports and services available for First Nations people with disability. Are they provided? When? And how? And by whom are they provided? How disability and First Nations people's status may affect the risk assessments and the decision-making by child safety workers, the cultural competency in decision-making and the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle in practice. Relevant to these topics, in particular to the decision-making issue, is the concept of unconscious bias. Analysis from the Australian National University, published in the Journal of Australian Indigenous Issues in December 2019, shows most Australians tested for unconscious bias hold a negative view of First Nations people, which can lead to widespread racism. Bias was regardless of gender, age, ethnicity, occupation, religion, education level, geography or political leanings. 75% of Australians tested using the Implicit Association Test, a joint initiative of universities including Harvard, Yale and the University of Sydney, hold a negative implicit or unconscious bias against First Nations people. The researchers analysed the implicit bias of over 11,000 Australian participants over a 10-year period, and how this may lead to racist attitudes or behaviour. The results show there may be an implicit negative bias against Indigenous Australians across the board, which is likely the cause of the racism that many First Nations people experience. The results show it is likely that many people who hold these views have no awareness of their prejudice, as it is often unconscious implicit bias that can seep seamlessly and sometimes perniciously into the everyday decisions at all levels of society. First Nations people have long claimed sovereignty over their culture and their lands, and now this extends the claim of sovereignty to data about First Nations people. The concept of Indigenous data sovereignty refers to the right of First Nations people to exercise authority over the collection, access, analysis and use of data that relates to them. This is exercised through Indigenous data governance, which is an important mechanism for ensuring that First Nations people's perspectives, priorities and knowledge are centred. High-quality data empowers First Nations people to make informed decisions about their own development. Good data is critical for setting goals, measuring success against these goals and holding governments, organisations and others accountable for delivering on these goals. Without good data, it's not possible to know with double discrimination that First Nations people with disability experience in other aspects of their lives is also reflected in the child protection system. Without good data, it's difficult for systems and services to care for and to better support vulnerable parents. And yet, our work to date tends to indicate a lack of high-quality data in this area. We've observed this too in other hearings, public hearing six, which looked at the experiences of people with disability during COVID, and public hearing seven, which considered educational collect of children with disability. Preparation for this hearing included undertaking investigations as to whether child protection departments or state and territory governments capture, record and publicly report on the disability status of parents whose children they are providing services to. The purpose of these investigations was to obtain information as to whether children of First Nation parents with disability are overrepresented in the child protection system and are more likely to be placed in out-of-home care in comparison with the children of other parents. Under request or compulsory notice, we sought statements from all state and territory child protection departments about whether data is collected, recorded and reported about the First Nations and disability status of parents whose children are in contact with the child protection system. We will tender those statements to evidence at this hearing. From the information provided to the Commission from all jurisdictions, we observed that the First Nation status of parents is generally captured by state and territory child protection systems, with the apparent exception of Tasmania. However, there does not appear to be a consistent capture of collection, recording and reporting of the disability status of those parents. As a starting point, our analysis, the statements provided to the Royal Commission indicates that across Australian jurisdictions, there is no common definition for disability for the purpose of capturing data on disability status in child protection systems. We understand that no jurisdiction currently mandates in law or policy that child protection systems collect and record data on parental disability status. In response to a question about whether child protection departments collect, record information on disability status or disability indicators of parents in contact with child protection systems, the statements provided to the Commission indicate that jurisdictions may capture information about the disability status of parents within their client records, but no jurisdiction positively confirmed that they public report on the disability status of parents. All jurisdictions have explained that where information or parental disability status is collected and recorded, it may be for the primary purpose of conducting further harm and risk assessments on child safety and to assess parents' capacity to care for and protect their children. Only some jurisdictions prefer to that information being used to provide support to parents and family. Of all the jurisdictions, only the ACT Community Services Directorate expressly indicated that information about a parent's disability status is used to inform reasonable adjustments for parents with disability to access available services and supports. The Directorate also referred to work that is underway in that jurisdiction to ensure there is effective two-way communication, understanding and participation on an equal basis in its practices in respect of parents with disability. Some jurisdictions explain that the data available at parental disability is of poor quality or incomplete. Most jurisdictions identify that they are operating with information recording systems that require updating. They reported the limitations of these systems' impact on their capacity to record and report on data on parental disability status. We've seen therefore, in the information currently known to the Commission, the states and territories are not presently able to say on a statistical basis whether the children of parents with disability, including First Nations parents, are more likely to be subject to intervention by their child protection system, and whether they are overrepresented in particular stages of that system, such as in out-of-home care. If we are correct on that analysis, then this begs the question of how states and territories are able to direct resources towards parenting and family support services on the basis of evidence and need, which are appropriate and accessible for parents with disability and culturally appropriate and safe for First Nations parents with disability. This question will be addressed to the various government witnesses who will be given evidence this week. I want to now give an outline of some of the witnesses who will give their evidence this week. We will hear from a Waka Waka woman and a mother with disability who has direct experience of interactions with the child protection system in Queensland. She will give evidence under the pseudonym Anne. Anne has been diagnosed with schizophrenia, a form of psychosocial disability. She was first diagnosed when admitted to hospital after experiencing a psychotic episode. At that time, she was a young single mother. The department removed her son from her care under a short-term order. Over the next several years, her son was the subject of further short-term orders. After a further psychotic episode, the department sought an order for long-term guardianship until her son would be 18. This despite the fact that since her further episode, Anne had become a mother to a second child, a daughter, who was not removed from her care. Anne fought to have her son returned to her. She proactively sought supports to help her with her parenting and her mental health condition. Anne will speak of her efforts and will describe how, with the assistance of culturally appropriate mental health supports and through the advocacy of her lawyer, she was able to successfully challenge the application by the department for a long-term guardianship order. Earlier this year, more than five years after he was first removed, Anne was finally able to be reunited with her son, and she and her partner now will live together as a family again. We'll hear from Christine May, who was an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander mental health worker within the Cultural Healing Programme provided by Queensland Health on the Sunshine Coast. Christine is the caseworker who works alongside Anne. Christine will give evidence about the unique support provided to First Nations people through the Cultural Healing Programme, and of the assistance she was able to provide to Anne to help her to be reunited with her son. She will speak of her observations of the way the department interacted with Anne and her concerns about the insufficiency of timely provision of culturally appropriate and safe supports for First Nations parents with disability. We'll also hear from a First Nations woman and mother with disability. She will give her evidence under the pseudonym Kate. At the age of two, Kate was removed from her own mother and placed in foster care with an Aboriginal foster mother, a respected auntie who Kate calls Mum. She grew up with many foster siblings in a large Aboriginal foster family. Although Kate identifies as a First Nations person and her culture is important to her, because of her own early removal at a young age, she is unsure which side of her family her First Nations heritage comes from. Kate has variously been diagnosed with ADHD, low borderline autism, Asperger's and intellectual disability. She was subjected to sexual abuse while in primary and high school, and when aged 16, her foster mother became unwell and Kate left home for a time lived on the streets. She eventually secured accommodation where she lived with her ex-partner, who had also been in foster care. That relationship lasted for several years but was marked by episodes of family violence inflicted upon Kate by her partner. Not long after securing stable accommodation- Not long after securing stable accommodation, Kate became pregnant with her first child. Late in her pregnancy, a serious incident occurred. A fire destroyed the home and all their possessions. Her partner was left seriously injured and hospitalized, and Kate was left homeless. Two weeks after her baby was born, the department took the child, citing homelessness. Kate's second child was removed a few months after birth. By this time, Kate had separated from her ex-partner because of repeated acts of domestic violence. However, the department determined that Kate was not capable of parenting a baby alone without her ex-partner's help. Her third child was removed straight after birth. Kate had no opportunity to show that she could be a capable parent. Kate will tell us the experience with her fourth child was very different. With the help of her disability caseworker, she proactively contacted the department as soon as she found out that she was pregnant and pleaded with them to provide support so she could keep the baby. In effect, the department was coaxed and compelled to help Kate keep her child through early intervention, rather than again following a pathway to removal. Kate's fourth child has not been removed, and they currently live together with Kate's new partner as a family. We'll hear from Julia Wren, who was a disability caseworker for the Intellectual Disability Rights Service, the IDRS, which provides legal help, justice support and other services to people with cognitive impairment in New South Wales. Julia was the caseworker for Kate. Julia will give evidence about her advocacy role, her experience in engaging in prenatal work and her views of the importance of early engagement, coordination and navigation with support services such as the NDIS and community supports. We'll hear from a laryngology woman and mother with direct experience of interactions with the child protection system in South Australia. She will give evidence under the pseudonym Shontaya. Shontaya is the mother of three children. After her youngest child was born in 2018, she was assessed and diagnosed with a chromosomal abnormality, a genetic abnormality that results in developmental and language delays. Much later, after the department became involved, she was formally diagnosed with a mild intellectual disability. Although she was never aware of it, over the years, various notifications have been made to the department about child safety concerns in respect of her children. This happening in the context of recurring family violence. Shontaya was the victim of significant and prolonged violence by her ex-partner, the father of her two youngest children. He would verbally abuse her and beat her, and she would flee with the children but would eventually return and the cycle of violence would continue. Shontaya will describe how her world fell apart in 2019. She and her family, with whom she is close, were mourning after several close family members passed away. The family support that Shontaya usually had was reduced as the family attended to Surrey business. Shontaya had physical health issues of her own, which included serious injuries inflicted upon her by her ex-partner around the end of that year. It was at this point that the department became involved, initially seeking a short-term, three-month order. During that process, Shontaya was assessed as having low intellectual functioning, following a parenting capacity assessment. As a result of the department's assessment, the department changed their approach from working towards reunification and instead sought a long-term guardianship order in respect of the three children on the basis that Shontaya lacked the capacity to parent or the capacity to learn to parent. This matter is currently before the court and is the subject of a reserve decision, and therefore there are limitations on the evidence which will be given here to the commission. However, her evidence will speak of what it was like for her as a proud First Nations woman with disability through this journey. This week, we will also hear evidence from a number of statutory officers. Commissioner June Oscar, the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Social Justice Commissioner, Commissioner Natalie Lewis from the Queensland Family and Child Commission, Commissioner April Lorry, the Commissioner for Aboriginal Children and Young People, South Australia, and Assistant Commissioner Hux, the Assistant Children's Commissioner, the Office of the Children's Commissioner, Northern Territory. Each of the commissioners, Oscar, Lewis and Lorry, are First Nations women. Commissioner Oscar will speak of the key challenges facing First Nations parents with disability from a national perspective. Her evidence will include insights into a number of matters, including the concept of disability, impact of factors such as intergenerational trauma, colonisation, mistrust of government agencies, poverty and housing on the experiences of First Nation people with disability and their families in contact with child protection systems. She will also talk about the need for accessible and culturally appropriate supports and services and staff working with the child protection systems. The evidence of Commissioners Lewis and Lorry and Assistant Commissioner Hux will address some of the key challenges facing First Nations parents with disability in contact with child protection systems in their respective jurisdictions. We'll also hear from a number of witnesses who will provide evidence of their experiences as advocates or support service providers and their interactions within the child protection system context. We'll hear from is Thelma Schwartz, Torres Strait Islander First Nations woman and a principal legal officer of the Queensland Indigenous Family Violence Legal Service. Ms. Schwartz has 30 years' experience in criminal and care protection matters, and she will give evidence of the relevant need from the department for the Department of Child Safety, Youth and Women to make investment in front-end engagement and to ensure there are active efforts to assist families of parents with disability. We'll hear from Ken Clift, who was a solicitor with the Intellectual Disability Rights Service, the IDRS, which is the co-convenor of the New South Wales, and here's the co-convenor of New South Wales Care and Protection Network. The IDRS are an independent advocacy service that provides support services to people with intellectual disability or cognitive impairment. They have a particular focus on assisting parents with intellectual disability in their engagement with child protection systems in New South Wales. Mr. Clift will speak to the issues that arise when his First Nations clients are not provided with support to enable them to comprehend and meaningfully participate in court proceedings or to comply with court orders or participate in mainstream parenting programmes. Kathy Pereira, who was the solicitor, principal solicitor and coordinator of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Women's Legal Service, North Queensland, will give evidence. She has represented First Nations women with disability for many years. She will provide her perspectives on the need to reorientate the system around prevention and support and the importance of cultural competency of and understanding of human right obligations by departmental staff. Ms. Leanne Burkino give evidence. She is a First Nations social worker who works for the Inala Indigenous Health Service. She will give evidence about her work as a caseworker, where she provides support to First Nations mothers with disability who are in contact with the child protection system. She will speak of the importance of wraparound services in providing First Nations mothers with disability the support and their concerns about the influence of stereotypes on decision-making with respect to First Nations mothers with disability. We'll hear from representatives of First Nations child protection peak bodies, those who provide support and services to First Nations parents, children and young people and advocate for the community. Information that's been perceived by the commission indicates that some First Nations parents with disability are confronted with the difficulty that sometimes those working within and for government and government services have pre-existing views about them. In particular, we will hear from Richard Weston, who is a descendant of the Muriam People and is the CEO of the Secretariat of National Aboriginal and Islander Child Care, Snake. Candice Butler, a First Nations woman who is the Director of Innovation and Practice at the Queensland Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Child Protection Peak. Dana Clark, a First Nations woman who is the CEO of Byron Dali Aboriginal Corporation and the Chairperson of ABSEC, the New South Wales Child, Family and Community Services Peak Aboriginal Corporation. And Olivia King, the Manager of NDIS and Residential Care with the Aboriginal Family Support Service based in South Australia. These witnesses will speak to issues which commonly brought to their attention from their clients and from their membership which relate to this hearing. There will also be evidence from academic witnesses. We will hear from Professor Daryl Higgins, a registered psychologist and the Director of the Institute of Child Protection Studies at the Australian Catholic University. His evidence will address a number of factors, including that Australia's child protection system is focused on tertiary child protection, that is, reaction and reactive intervention by child protection authorities, including actions of removal based on reported risk in comparison to other international models, which have a greater emphasis on the provision of prevention and early intervention. He will also speak as to how that reactive orientation is reflected in the much lower funding for universal and targeted prevention and early intervention programmes and services compared with the funding for tertiary child protection. Dr. Tracy Westerman will speak to the commission. She is a First Nations woman from the Nyamal People and a practising psychologist who has created culturally and psychometrically validated tools which enable the reliable assessment and diagnosis of psychosocial disability for First Nations people. She's also conducted significant research on assessing the cultural competency of child protection staff and has developed tools for evaluating the cultural competency of Aboriginal mental health workers and child protection workers. Her evidence has been pre-recorded and will be played to the commission. We will also tender a statement from Professor Claire Tilbury, Professor in the School of Human Services and Social Work at Griffith University. Professor Tilbury has a long career in research, informed policy and practices in the family support and child protection fields in Queensland, and her work focuses on child protection systems and racial disparities and child welfare. Amongst other things, her evidence will address the overrepresentation of First Nations children in out-of-home care and the structural drivers for this in the child protection system, including its forensic orientation and limited availability of support services. There will also be a number of government witnesses who will give evidence and we'll hear from this week. Topics those witnesses may be examined about will include division of responsibilities between departments for the provision of supports and consideration of removal, decision-making tools, training and issues related to unconscious bias, responses to past reports and inquiries, the capacity of departments to measure change in practice or to measure the efficacy of their practice, and whether and how the needs of First Nations parents with disability are identified and then supported. Now Chair, as you're aware, the commission has made a number of non-publication orders and pseudonim orders in respect of this hearing. In this respect, we particularly note that an order has been made prohibiting the names, identifying information, contact details and images of the witnesses who will be giving evidence under the pseudonyms Anne, Kate and Shontaya, their partners, former partners and children. If I can repeat and reiterate the content warning from earlier, this hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. The hearing will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations people with disability and their experiences with child safety across Australia. First Nation viewers, please note that the evidence will describe removal. Support services are available if the evidence raises concerns for you. Please contact the National Counselling and Referral Service on 1-800-421-468, Lifeline on 131114, Beyond Blue on 1300-224-636, or your local Aboriginal medical service for social and emotional wellbeing support.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley. Could we now please take appearances from other parties? Could we start, please, with the Commonwealth?
Please, the commission, my name is Ms. Munro and I appear for the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Ms. Munro. Is there an appearance for the state of New South Wales? For the state of Queensland.
Yes, good morning, Chair. My name is McMillan, initials KIA, Queens Council, and I appeal with Ms. Clovisi, instructed by Crown Law for the state of Queensland.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. And is there an appearance for the state of Victoria?
Yes, Chair, my name is Scott Chesterman. I appear with Rebecca Beck on behalf of the state of Victoria.
Not sure we heard that in time, but thank you. And I think there may be one other appearance, perhaps, for Ms. Burkina. No, well then perhaps that concludes the appearances. If somebody has missed out either because of a technical problem or other reasons, we can deal with that after the adjournment. Mr. Crowley, is it appropriate now to take a short adjournment?
Yes, Chair, if we could, please.
We'll take an adjournment then for 20 minutes and resume at kidney time 11:55, Brisbane time 10:55. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is adjourned.
I think, Ms. Burkina, we managed to overlook you or not connect with you for announcing your appearance.
Commissioner, my name is Gail Furness, head of the state of South Wales, instructed by Crown Justice.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crowley.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Before we commence with the first witnesses' evidence this morning, there's something that I wanted to make plain about, the evidence of the witnesses Anne, Shontaya and Kate. Each of those witnesses are bearing witness and they will give their own perspectives as First Nation parents with disability and how they feel and felt in the interactions with the child protection system. Although the commission has sought and been provided with relevant information and documentation from the relevant departments involved, it's not proposed to seek any specific factual findings in respect of their individual cases or to ask for findings about whether any particular action or decision taken was right or wrong. The evidence of Anne, Shontaya and Kate will help the Royal Commission to better understand the issues encountered by First Nations parents with disability involved in the complex child protection system and through listening to the voices of First Nations parents as they speak to understand about their own experiences. Now, having said that, the first witness we have this morning to give evidence is Anne. Commissioners, you will find a copy of the statement of Anne in the tender bundle, part A, volume one, at tab one. I tender that statement and ask it be received into evidence and ask that it be admitted as exhibit 8.1. There is also some additional... Sorry, Chair.
Yeah, no, that can be done, thank you.
There's also some additional material, which I note is subject to the non-publication direction, CTH DNP 00058, made on 18 November 2020. Commissioners, that material is included in part A of the tender bundle at tabs two to 22, and I ask that that material also be received and tender it and ask it be marked as exhibit 8.11 through to 8.121.
Yes, that also can be done, thank you.
Commissioners, we have Anne present in the hearing room and she is ready to commence giving her evidence.
Thank you. I'll wait for... Yes, thank you. I wonder if Anne, if you wouldn't mind following the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate for the purposes of administering the oath or the affirmation, as the case may be.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, Anne. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Crowley will now ask you some questions.
Now, Anne, I want to ask you to start a bit about yourself. Anne, you're a First Nations woman.
Ah, yes.
Who are your people?
Ah, Waka Waka.
And you live up at the Sunshine Coast with your family?
Ah, yes.
And in your family, which side is the Aboriginal side of your family?
Um, my mother.
What about on dad's side?
Ah, he's Vietnamese.
And both of those cultures are important to you?
Ah, yes.
And to your family?
Yep.
Now, you live up the coast with your family, you have two children?
Yeah.
And they live with you?
Yes.
And Anne's the case that you have been diagnosed in the past with paranoid schizophrenia?
Yeah.
And sometimes that's a condition that you have to monitor?
Ah, yes.
And to look for treatment or sometimes support when you have episodes?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I want to ask you, Anne, about your own growing up. So the case is that you grew up around the Brisbane area?
Ah, yes, yeah.
And you come from a big family?
Yes.
How many brothers and sisters?
Ah, eight on my mum's side and three on my dad's side.
And just tell us about your, your growing up, if you could. Who did you grow up with?
Um, I grew up with my nan and my uncle mainly. And, yeah.
That was the case, was it, Anne, that when you were young, around two, that you went from your mum's care into your nan's care?
Yes.
And was that as a result of child protection?
Um, I think it was just a, um, like a word with my mum to my nan to look after me, so.
And then you grew up from then with your nan?
Ah, yes.
Well, just tell us about your, your growing up with nan. What was it like?
Um, it was hard, um, wasn't easy.
What was hard about it?
Um, I had to grow up really quick, um. I... She was an alcoholic and I had to, um, look after her.
What sort of things did you have to do to look after her?
Um, so I, um, like cleaned the house after she would have like an all-nighter, um, drinking with her friends, um.
From what sort of age were you doing that?
Um, I think around about, from about seven or eight, um, eight years old probably.
Now, in your statement, you've spoken about your nan sometimes dropping you off at, at Macca's?
Hmm.
Um, and you would stay there for hours?
Hmm.
Um, just tell us about that, how often would that happen?
Ah, quite regularly actually, um. Probably every payday and a bit more, more days throughout the week, um. I, yeah, I'd be there quite a lot.
What about at school, how did you go at school?
Um, I didn't really, it was all kind of a blur, like, um, yeah.
Did you get along with the other kids at school?
Um, not really, no.
Why do you think that was?
Um, probably because I grew up too quick looking after my nan, um. She had arthritis and, um, ah, she had diabetes, um. I watched her struggle through winter with her arthritis and I would be massaging her feet and asking if she's okay and I would make her like, you know, breakfast in the morning and pick her flowers from the garden and it wasn't good enough.
And when you were that age at school, you said about growing up quick?
Hmm.
Do you feel that the other kids at the school really didn't understand the sort of things that you had to do at your height?
Absolutely, um. I would literally like, um, stay up at night because I was too scared to go to bed, um, just because there's so many people coming through the house and, and should just be blind and I would be like hiding under my bed, um, to try to protect myself and, um, even though nothing happened, but I just was like so scared, um. Um, yeah.
How did you go at school with your studies?
Um, I fell behind really badly, like I, I still can't do my like multiplier and stuff like that, like it still takes me a long time to, um, do maths and stuff, um. I've the, yeah, I'm not really good at like academically smart, but, um, yeah.
Now, you stayed with your nan then until, um, you were about teenager or so, a young teenager?
Yeah.
And where did you go from there?
Um, I stayed with my nan till I was 16 and then as soon as I could leave the house, I went down to my stepdad's in, um, and I, then I met my son's, um, my firstborn, um, father. Um, so, yeah.
And how old were you when you met him?
I was 16, I think I'd just turned 16.
And where were you living at the time?
Um, I think I was living at my stepdad's, but then I kind of like ran away, um, to live with my son's dad. So I was living, and then I lived.
And did you then have a relationship with your son's father then for the next five or so years?
Yes.
Um, and when you were with him, were you living with his family?
Yes.
Now during that time, um, you told us you were 16, did you? What, what year did you end finishing at school?
Um, I think I left school when I was 15 maybe, um, and then I turned 16 and then I got a job. Um, so I didn't finish, I finished school when I was 15.
What job did you, sorry, what job did you get in?
Ah, just, I think Red Rooster, like just cooking, cleaning.
And then during the time that you were living with your son's father's family?
Hmm.
Did you end up doing a job working for his father's company?
Yes, I did, yeah.
What sort of work was that?
Ah, rendering.
And what did you have to do?
Ah, labouring, so a lot of mixing the mud, um, just helping out.
How long did you do that for?
Um, I did that for a little while, maybe, hmm, I'm not sure, two years or so.
I want to ask you now about your son.
Hmm.
You became pregnant with your son when you were 19?
Yes, I, I think it was 18 because I had him when I was 19.
Now just tell us at that time, um, when you were pregnant, um, how was the relationship with, with your then partner?
Um, I think it was good when I was pregnant, yeah.
And what about then, after your son was born?
Um, it was still good, um. Yeah, it was still good after I was born, um. But we had like troubles and stuff, yeah.
And what were the sort of troubles that were happening after that time?
Um, just family issues, hmm.
Now, as a result of the, the family issues, um, did you, did you end up splitting with your, with your son's father?
Yeah.
You told us earlier that you were living in the house, parents, his parents' house?
Yeah.
Um, when your son was born, were you still living there?
Um, yes, yeah.
Then after you've then broken up with your then ex-partner?
Hmm.
Um, where did you go?
Um, I went househopping, like, um, from like family to family. No one really wanted us, no one really like cared or like wanted to help. So I went couch surfing with my son, um. Um, yeah, it was quite a hard time for me, um. We kind of went up, um, and then back down and I stayed with like my uncle, um, my cousin. Um, I stayed everywhere, my nan even, um, yeah.
How old was your son at the time?
I'm not quite sure, I think he was going on two years maybe, yeah.
After you did that, travelling around and the couch surfing, did you end up at a women's refuge?
Yes, I did, yeah.
And where was the refuge?
Um, um, and yeah, I was hiding pretty much, so, yeah.
When you say hiding, why were you hiding?
Um, from my ex-partner. Yeah.
This is because of the issues you talked about earlier?
Yeah.
How long did you stay at the refuge?
Um, I stayed there for about a year.
And how did you find it there?
Um, it was okay, it's just too far out and I was a bit isolated.
After staying at the refuge?
Hmm.
Where did you next go?
Ah, we found a property, it was a two-bedroom property, um, for me and my son, um. And shortly after, I, um, found out, or I got quite unwell there.
Hmm, just, just tell us about that part of your, your life. You'd moved out of the refuge into an apartment?
Hmm.
With your son?
Yeah.
So you had your own place, did you have anyone else around you at the time?
Absolutely no one, um. I, I, it was just me and my son to be honest and, um. Yeah, there was, there was no one.
What about the rest of your family?
Um, no one, not even my family, um, no friends, I had one friend, um. But she wasn't really good influence on me, um. I didn't eat for probably three days, um. I knew my son had to be removed from me because into like a safer, because I was in a psychosis at that point, so that was a really, um, kind of dark time
Hmm.
of my life.
How long were you living there, just with you and your son in that apartment?
Ah, about a year, going on two.
And how long do you think it was that you had this dark period where you felt unwell?
Um, I think about long, it, it kind of like got worse, um, towards the end and where it was like unbearable and it was obvious that I needed help. But prior to that, um, I was so anxious and I had anxiety, like crippling anxiety where I had to get food delivered to my house. Um, and I would not go out to the park and take him to the park unless it was like nighttime. Um, so, and that's such a different life to what I have now, but, um, it's still like a time of my life I don't want to go back to.
Now, during that time?
Hmm.
You said you didn't have anyone around you?
Hmm.
Um, what about any, any support for your, your mental health at that time?
Um, well, I didn't know it was mental health, I, um, I was kind of like, you know, like very, like I would never have mental health in my life, like I only have like anxiety and that's it, but I don't have like anything severe. So, um, yeah, I wouldn't reach out for help, um, at that point I was too, um, my ego is too high.
And up until this time, you'd never been diagnosed with any mental health issue?
No, not at all.
Or seen anyone for help with mental health conditions?
No.
Now, after this went on for a time, um, it'd come to the point where, as you said, it was getting too much?
Hmm.
And eventually the, the ambulance came and took you to the, up Nambur Hospital?
Yeah.
Just tell us about that.
Um, I was in the ambulance and the paramedics, um, I'm like, don't you have, well, I was in a psychosis on the way to the hospital and I had my son with me and I was feeling really bad that I was, um, acting like in a psychosis, but I was so deep in a psychosis, I, I was still talking and I was, I was scaring him, um. And the paramedics were like, they were like, I'm like, don't you have like, you know, kids of your own, daughter of your own at my age probably and, you know, when you, um, when you want to protect them as well, like that's what I'm trying to do, like why would you kill me and stuff? Like I had in my head that they were taking me somewhere to kill me and probably my son and I was worried, um. So, yeah, I was highly paranoid.
You eventually were admitted into the?
Nambur.
Nambur Hospital?
Yeah.
And you spent a period of time there in the psychiatric ward?
Hmm.
Now, during that time, when you first got there, your son was still with you?
Yeah.
Um, just tell us about when you, what happened with your son during the, the stay there at the hospital?
Um, I think we stayed there overnight, um, and I was hearing voices and I thought they were coming from the ceiling. Um, and I was so deep in the psychosis, it wasn't funny, like I was, um, so out of it, um, and my son was really scared, um. And I said, I agreed to him being removed, but, um, I didn't know for how long, I just said, can you just look after him till I get better? Um, and yeah, the Department of Child Safety came in the morning and, um, got me to sign papers, but because I was in a psychosis, they would, it felt like they just threw them at me, like, and just said, sign it, like, um, after and, um, but they didn't give me any more information, it was kind of like really quick and let's go, we've got a job to do kind of thing, it wasn't like, you know, are you okay, you know, we'll look after him for you um, till you get better and, um, and we'll get you some help, like it wasn't like that, it was like really quick and fast.
Did you know at that time how long he was going to be?
Absolutely not, I wouldn't agree to it if, like in my mind at that time, I wouldn't agree to it if they said, you know, you can have your son five years later, um, I wouldn't agree to it at all.
It was during that hospital admission that you were diagnosed with paranoid schizophrenia?
Hmm.
And that was the first time you'd been actually told that you had that, that disability and that condition?
Yes.
Now, just with what happened with your, your son?
Hmm.
Um, he was then taken into some emergency care with a, with a carer, foster parent?
Ah, yes, for maybe three months or so, or a bit longer, maybe six months.
And then after that, was he then placed with your, your sister?
Yeah, and she became the carer, um, yeah.
Now, how long were you in the hospital for?
I thought I was in there for a lifetime, but at like not, when I entered the hospital, it felt like I was in there for a day, but I had actually been there for like a month and a half and then, um. And then as soon as I was taking my pills and getting better, it felt like a lifetime, but they said that I was only in there for about two and a half months, maybe three.
And when you came out?
Hmm.
Um, where did you go then?
Oh, um, I went to my house, um, and I stayed at my sister's as, as well, um. So, yeah, back and forward between my sisters and my house. So, yeah, back and forward between my sisters and my house.
This is your sister that had the care of the son?
Yes, yeah.
So how often were you seeing him then?
Um. I don't know, not that often. I, well, I seen him a little bit. But um I was missing him so much from seeing him like every morning. To like not seeing him at all for a whole week and then. It was kind of a blur to me as well, so I'm not quite sure, um. I'm not quite sure how many times a week did I get to see him or hours. Um, because I was quite unwell even when I left the hospital. I was still, like, I was over the. The deep psychosis, but I felt like I was still a bit unwell. Like mentally.
When you were in the hospital, um, is that when you first met Christine May?
Uh, yeah, um, I I think I met Sue, um. She's from Culture Healing as well, um, well, she did work with them. But I think I met um a whole team, like two, I I will like remember it's two people. Coming to me in the hospital and saying, you know, do you want to join up in this? Um, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander like um. Mental health team and I. I was like, this is, is this like um like where you join up to a club and they. Give you freebies or something? I didn't know what it was cause I've never been um. Like diagnosed and I thought they had my diagnosis wrong. Like I didn't think that I had schizophrenia at all, um, so yeah.
Do you know who arranged or brought cultural healing to see you?
Um, no, no, uh, not at that time and yeah, still unsure.
That's the first time that you became involved with cultural healing?
Yeah.
When you left the hospital, did you keep in contact with them?
Um, I think I was just like, you know, like just shoved them to the side. I didn't really, um. I didn't really want anything to do with them at all, like and. They would call me and stuff and I would be like um hanging up my phone. They'll be, they'll hear my um phone ringing inside my unit and then they'll be like. You're in there and yeah.
After you've left the hospital.
Yeah.
Your son was still with your sister and her partner.
Yeah.
Under the original arrangement that had been made while you were in the hospital?
Oh, um, cause I had been in a couple of stays in the hospital, um. After I got diagnosed, but when I was in the hospital, I was in there for about three months. Um, I forgot the la names, the lady's name, the foster carer, but she took care of. The whole period while I was in hospital, then once I got out, um. Placed with the carers, my sister and her girlfriend, um. So, yeah, is that what you mean?
Hmm. Yeah, so I was just asking about your son, what the arrangement was with him.
Yeah.
After you came out.
Uh.
Your sister had him with her partner.
Yeah.
Now, did that continue on then with a number of different orders being made for the continued?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
What was the contact that you had with your son during that time?
Minimal to none at all, um. My sister's girlfriend is a lawyer. She knows what she can and can't do legally. So she um lined up, well, she knew she could work with. Um, Department of Child Safety to remove him permanently, but they were unsuccessful, but um. She done everything in her power to kind of um remove him.
Now, dur- during this time.
Mm.
Um, were you in contact with the with the department yourself?
Um. No, no, um. I thought they didn't want anything to do with me when I first was diagnosed. I thought maybe I I was too scary for them or something, um. But that's because I had no dealings with them at the beginning, um. It only, they only started poking their heads out when they wanted. Time they thought that they could get in full time, um. And they worked with the carers to try to get him off me, so. I I dealt with them, yeah, later on, not at beginning.
We'll take you forward then till about a year or so after you had left the hospital.
Mm.
Um, you're speaking, you're stating about then being in um accommodation where. It was accommodation provided for people with mental health conditions.
Yeah.
Could all live together.
Yep.
And that's where you met your current partner.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and your current partner, um, he also has schizophrenia.
Yeah, he does. That was a big um like great tick against our name cause we. Like. They said, what if, like, you know, we both get unwell at the same time, which we have, and um. They they didn't like that. They um thought it was like. You know, they had a case against us automatically, um, and it would work in their favour if they took us to court. If we, yeah.
You're describing, you're stating about your your partner now.
Mm.
Being very supportive of you.
Yeah.
Very gentle with you.
Yeah, absolutely, um, he's great. He's great with. Not blood, like his, um, but he treats. Just as equal to his daughter that we share, so it's really good.
And. You've also described about how you support one another with your. Your conditions, your mental health conditions.
Our diagnosis, yeah, um, he's been in the system longer than I have, um. About fifteen years or so, um. So he kind of knows when my thoughts are a bit paranoid. Um, and then he voices his concern with culture healing and culture healing are on top of it. Um, by just coming around, checking on me, making sure that I'm not um. Too unwell and make sure that any concerns I have around, you know, when I was going through, uh. Battling the department, um, he would like, um, they would like. Just make check in with me, make sure that I'm okay. And reassure me that everything's gonna be okay. And then the next day I would wake up and I feel much better. That I had that chat with them. It's just um not bottling it up for me, which makes all the difference.
Nowadays, you have a relapse plan in place. And cultural healing, keeping contact with them is part of that that plan.
Yeah.
Now, during that time that you, when you first met your current partner. Uh, and you were living in that supported accommodation.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Not long after that, was it the case that you and your partner moved out and were living um together?
Yep.
And. Did you end up living down again around the Brisbane area?
Uh, yeah, that was, um. I got so nervous coming down here today because. Um, I was thinking all the what-if cases, like if I, um. If I my respiratory flares up and, um. And I need to go to the hospital, would I rather just. Not go to the hospital or would I rather like suffer because. Yeah, I think we'll get to that, won't we? But I struggled with um. With coming down here because it was so hard for me to um. Trust that the. The health system, like the hospitals, I did the three hospitals I went to. Um, would actually help us.
Hmm.
Cause I haven't in the past.
I wanna ask you about the time that you were living down here again with your partner. Um, during that time, you lost contact with cultural healing and Christine May?
Yeah, um, I lost contact with them not because, um. You know, they weren't helping me, just because um we had so many services like. And we felt like everything around us was very clinical, um, very, um, we had. We had a lot of services around us. We had to go through like triple P program, um. You know, heaps of parenting programs that the department would put us through. Um, and even when we came down here, we couldn't escape it. They were still sending people down to kind of like, um. Like just put us through the wringer, it felt, like they weren't trying to help us, um. Like, yeah, it just felt like there was so much pressure.
Hmm.
Being up there than compared down here, but down here we didn't get any of the support we were supposed to when we reached out for help.
Well, you've just talked about services, you didn't feel like you were getting help.
Mm.
Um, what in your view is the difference then between help and services that were being provided?
So, what's that?
What's the difference between help you wanted and the services that you were?
Being provided.
Yeah.
Um, I felt like docs were trying to check in on us, like they weren't doing it cause. We want you to um better your parenting skills because you might need it for future. Or it might really help your family, um. It didn't feel like that and they worded it differently like. Everything was just really clinical, like they wouldn't say, you know, mommy and. Sun time, it would it would be like or family time, it would be like. You know, you can have contact for one hour on Friday, you know, um, it was very. Um, I felt like. I don't know, I just.
Now, when you were down back here in uh the Brisbane area.
Mm.
Um. You were you were still on an involuntary treatment order for your mental health?
Yeah.
And still taking medication.
Yeah.
Did you have other support available to you down here?
Uh, it was so crap. I would never live here again, um. It, I don't know why we got so treated so differently compared to the up the Sunshine Coast like. We. I went I went to the gym every day, um, twice a day, went to work, um. And, you know, I was always nice to my neighbours and stuff, but, um. I don't know, like. The mental health team down here was appalling, um. They didn't reach out to help me when I um tried to commit suicide, um. They. Like, they didn't, you know, I think. Uh, there was just not much help. There was, um, I can't even put it into words how much. Anger I'm I have with me right now because it was just shocking. It was disgusting, um. Me and my partner went to three different hospitals. Because I was in a psychosis and I needed someone to look after my son and there was no one to help, um. I didn't know who to turn to, um. Like family were busy and and I, the only people I thought to go to was like. I think I even rang, um. Um, can I say the place? Um, I think I even rang this lady at Pine Rivers Mental Health, um, I think I rang her. A couple of times to tell her that I was actually unwell, I needed help and there was nothing. And then I went to, um. I went to Kabucha, Redcliffe and what was the other one? Prince Charles, um. And there was no help there, so I'm I'm still frustrated to this day, um. It nothing, you know, nothing kind of helps it like. Helps me forget about what I went through and my family went through. I almost lost my life because like. I could have got help sooner. I I should have got help sooner, um. But there was there was nothing. There was nothing for me and my family and my son. They couldn't even care about him.
I will ask you about that a bit more in a moment.
Yeah.
But just going back to the time before that.
Mm.
You tell us about how you came down to the Brisbane area again.
Mm.
During that time, your son stayed with the carers, your sister and her partner still?
Yeah.
But you still had some contact?
Um. I think it was. Oh, is that when um I would drive to the Sunshine Coast and grab him and then bring him back down?
Yeah, just tell us about that.
Um, we struggled a little bit with financial um side, like getting petrol. Up there and back, um, and I had to fit it in. The carers weren't obliged to bring him halfway. Um, they would just be like, no, no, it's not our job, you know, if you wanted to move down there, you have to. Do it all and um in the end I think we came up with um. Docs would bring him sometimes or something like that. I'm not quite sure. It's a while ago.
How often were you seeing your son?
Um. Oh, I'm not quite sure, um. I think it was like, I'm I couldn't really say, cause I'm I'm not too sure, like I was. I think every second weekend or every weekend or, mm.
After a time.
Cause it changed. It was like every, you know, I'd get him for an hour and then. Nothing and then they would increase it to two hours and then it'd be like. Oh, you get them every second weekend and then every weekend, like.
And did it eventually work up to a plan where you were going to be?
Reunified, um, yes.
Now, the, what you told us about a moment ago.
Mm.
About the incident where you were in a, having a psychotic episode.
Mm.
And went to a number of hospitals. Um, that happened during the time when you were working towards reunification with your son.
Uh, yeah, well, um. Yeah, yeah.
It's come back to that that part then, when you felt felt this, you were becoming unwell again.
Mm.
You talked about um that you saw some help.
Yeah.
From a number of places.
Yeah.
Including going to the hospital.
Mm.
Oh, did you. Your son with you at the time?
Um, at the first hospital that we ever went to, um. I think I got uh my friend at the time to look after him. While we go and seek help, um, because. Every every hospital that I went to, they didn't wanna help me, so. And I didn't wanna bring him in there while I was like, you know, in a psychosis, so. I didn't, I was still thinking like clear, like around him, like I was thinking. I don't want him to see anything and I don't want him to be worried. I just wanna get help and there was no help. And I kept on trying, so, yeah.
And after you went to different hospitals. Um, did you get the help you're looking for?
Um, not until I stabbed myself in the chest and punctured my lung, so that was eventful.
I'll ask you about that.
Mm.
What happened with with your son though before that that episode?
Um, I done the right thing and this is the only thing that I was trying to do. I didn't care about myself. I just wanted him to. Not be, um. Like just to be helped, like I was trying to do everything for him and I was. Um, very emotionally, um. It was the most emotional time of my life, like I couldn't really, um. I can't really. Yeah, I dropped him off at Kabucha Hospital and I, um. I said, you'll be right here and they were feeding him sandwiches and stuff, um. And I was so shit scared of them because of the of the nurses and the paramedics and stuff. Some of the shit they were saying like, I was like, it was feeding my psychosis more. So, like, they would just say, um. Like, what, uh. Yeah, one paramedic, he fucking scared. Yeah, one paramedic, he fucking scared the shit out of me, um. But, yeah, I just left him there and I said, you'll be okay with nurses. And I walked out of there crying, um. I was emotional. I was so emotional and I think, um, for anyone that couldn't see how emotional I was, like. That was crazy, but they were saying that I abandoned him there. I just left him and abandoned him and. That wasn't true, like I was really trying to do the best, right thing for him. I wasn't, um. Like. I had, um, gone home after I dropped him off and. I. Um, put a knife, a kitchen knife, a big blade through my chest, um. And I punctured my lung with the knife and then. I took the knife out and then I started filling up with blood, um, and I felt like I was on an adrenaline high. Um, I felt like I could jump out of building and not feel it. I was, I was so. Unwell, um, and I wouldn't wish that upon my worst enemy, like I felt. I felt like cheated almost, like I felt like I, um. Like, cause the, the people that are supposed to protect you weren't there that night. All, all the days leading up to that, so it was really hard. It was hard for. Um, I still have, I get funny with knives now, like I can't pick up knives. Um, and my partner, he's, he was there that night. So when I dropped off Tyson, it was just. We were yelling out, he was yelling out to the neighbours saying, she's got a knife, knife. No one came to help, no. I was in a psychosis so bad, I felt like I lost everything. I lost my son, um. You know, to docs again because I left him in the hospital. I felt like I had nothing left to live for, so I just, I'd done it and.
Hmm, I, I wanna ask you about that feeling and after you, you'd left your son at the hospital.
Mm.
Um, but before the incident you've just described.
Mm.
What were, what were you feeling then about the plan of reuniting with your son? What did you think was gonna happen?
Oh, I thought that they had it. I thought that they had a case to build against me and, um. Have him till he was eighteen. I didn't wanna live for that, um. I, I, I couldn't, I'd be stressing and worrying over him, you know, every day. Hoping that he's okay and stuff. That was the only thing that I was feeling is like. And I felt like, um, like a failure, like I felt like, um. What kind of mother leaves her son at a hospital? But that's the only choice I had. He wasn't even well, so like I. I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't look after him.
You told us about your sister and her partner as the carers before. At the time this happened. They weren't here. They were, they were on holiday somewhere.
Yeah.
Did you have anybody to turn to for help?
Um, no, no one, um. No one, no.
I wanna ask you then what happened after the incident where you've stabbed yourself.
Mm.
Um, you were in hospital for a time.
Yeah.
And then, um, after you were back out of hospital. Uh, your son was back then with the carers when they returned?
Yeah, oh, he was, um, apparently, I didn't know this, um, until I actually got out of hospital, I think. But he was with a foster carer and she was really lovely and then once. Um, once they came back, the carers, um, then they took over and looked after.
That's okay, your son. Now. After this then.
Mm.
There was a change with the, the department's plan, was no longer looking to reun- reunify.
Yeah.
The department then sought a long-term order over your son.
Yeah.
Uh, for long-term care until he was eighteen.
Mm.
Um, now, I wanna ask you about that. Um, when did you first find out the department was, was looking for that eighteen-year order?
They were very secretive, um. They didn't tell me, even though I was pushing them, pushing them, because the carers had told me. That something in the works is gonna happen, like they said something big and good or something they were saying. So I'm like, what is this, something big and good? Like, the carers wanted my son, um, full-time. Um, they're a lesbian couple and they don't wanna have, um, you know, like. Um, they wanna have one of their own but not necessarily, like, what's that thing called? Sperm donor or whatever, but, um, yeah.
And. When the department was seeking the long-term.
Yes.
Guardianship order for, um, your son.
Mm.
Um, was it around that time that you had come back into contact with Christine May and Cultural Healing?
Um, yes, yeah.
We're taking you'd moved back up to the Sunshine Coast area again.
Yeah, uh, we had to because we weren't getting any help down here, so we thought. Um, our best bet is to go, um, back up north, yeah.
And do you end up getting accommodation back up there, placed at the?
Uh, we stayed at, um. Partner's parents' house.
Now, when you were back in contact with Cultural Healing, how were they able to support you?
Uh, they were just amazing, um. They really helped me, um, emotionally, um. They were like just telling me that I can do it, I just keep going and. You know, um, they linked me in with services that would actually help, not just, um, weigh me down. Like, uh, like, um.
What sort of services?
Can I say a name? Uh, Atsul, um, so Atsul on the Sunshine Coast, um.
Tosh round on legal service.
Yeah, um, so I worked with, um. Um, and she helped me, um, yeah.
Now, did she, she help you with the court case?
Mm.
Where the department was seeking the long-term orders in respect of your son?
Yeah.
Uh, had the department at this stage, the department. Assisted you to, to go to any of these supports or services?
Um, not really, no. They didn't want to, um. I think, well, I didn't even know about Atsul until, um, Chris May brought it up, like, um. I was like, don't you have to pay for like, you know, a lawyer? Um. I was unsure about like what supports out there, so I started calling. Um, law firms myself and being like, how much do you charge, you know, um. And I was like, oh, I can't afford that and, you know, I was, I didn't know what I was doing, I just. Um, yeah.
And. In the time when the department was seeking the order. Um, did they speak to you or did you have any understanding about why they were, um. Looking for the long-term order now instead of trying to reun- reunify you with your son?
Um, well, they didn't really say anything. They didn't really speak to me, um. They just said, you'll have to refer back to your lawyer, um, and, yeah. So it wasn't like, you know, um, well. Fifty and, you know, we don't want to have him because of this reason, this reason. It wasn't like that. They were just like. Very, um. Yeah, very clinical.
Um, Chair, I wonder if we might just have a short break for five minutes, please, just then.
Yes, uh, we can do that. Um. Can you just indicate please what likely to happen in, as far as timing is concerned? How long are we likely to be with Anne, do you think?
Probably another fifteen minutes.
And then, uh, the next witness and then a break for lunch.
Yes.
That's the plan. All right, well, we'll take a break now for five minutes. Thank you, thank you, Anne, and we'll come back in about five minutes, okay?
The Royal, the Royal Commission is adjourned.
Your son, you told us about going to see Atsul's.
Mm.
Um, and with your lawyers, you, you opposed the application.
Yeah.
You were challenging that order.
Mm-hmm.
Looking to have instead your son come back to you after a period of time.
Yeah.
Now, during that time, um, can you tell us what were you doing, um, to try to. Put things in place.
Mm.
So that you could have your son back with you.
Um, I was trying to get a bigger house so we could, cause at the time we were just living in a two-bedroom. Um, little unit box thing, so I was trying to get a three-bedroom, um. I was just trying to tickle my boxes with Department of Child Safety, make sure that we're on track for. Ruinification, it's not going backwards, cause in the past, that's what's happened, is it's. Like, we'll make two, two steps forward and then one step back with them, so.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And did you end up getting another place to live?
Uh, yes, we did, yeah, eventually, but not straight away.
And what about any of the other programs and things? Were you doing those?
Um. I'm, I'm not sure if we were. I was, hmm.
You told us being reconnected back with Cultural Healing.
Yeah.
Were they helping you with other supports?
Uh, I think Docs put us on to refocus, um, on the Sunshine Coast, but. We didn't feel like, um, we're really connected with them as well as we did with Culture Healing, so. We stopped working with them, um, soon after we, o- only for like maybe a couple of months.
What was the difference between the connection you had with them and the connection you had with Cultural Healing?
Um, Culture Healing was like always reliable, um. Really supporting, they knew our family, they knew our story from the start, um. Yeah, there was, there was a lot of like, um. Different. I didn't really feel like I connected with them as much.
Yeah. After you, um, had your lawyers in place and you were challenged in the order.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Was around this time that you became pregnant again?
Yes, yeah, with my daughter.
And you eventually had a, a daughter?
Yeah.
Now, what happened with, anything with the department, uh, about your daughter? You tell them about her.
Um, I told them as soon as I was like, um. As soon as I knew, I told the department because I didn't want there to be like any secrecy or, um. That I didn't want them to think that I was hiding anything, cause. We were so unwired, like, um. Like with them, like we had to, I felt like we had to kind of like, um. Bow down to them in a, in type of way, um, yeah.
And was there anything done by the department to make an order or look to remove your, your daughter at any stage?
Um, they wanted to when I was thirty weeks or so, um, they wanted to, um. Or they wanted to look at removing her when she was born, that's what they told me, um, yeah.
But nothing did happen?
Um, no, no.
And your daughter stayed with you from birth till now?
Yeah.
Now. After you, you had your daughter.
Mm-hmm.
Did Cultural Healing, um, have a role to play in supporting you with your new baby?
Uh, absolutely. Cuddles and, um. They would come over and make sure that I'm well, um. Not just like, you know, a phone call. They would actually come over, just check that I'm well and. Everything's normal and, um, they'd give me advice, like, um, about. Um, parenting and if I needed help, like, they were always there for me, so it's really good.
And how were things at that time, though, when you had your daughter with you?
Mm-hmm.
But your, your son.
With the carers.
Was with the carers.
Um, well, when I. Um. They, um, when I had my daughter, they, um. Like, they came up to the hospital, um, the carers and they shown my son, um. You know. That is your sister, um. Yeah, like, it was really hard for us, um, just to. Kind of welcome. Her as well as like leaving, it was not like we were leaving him behind, but. Um, making sure that he's like feels, I know, part of the family too, like. Wasn't like we left him or anything.
Hmm. Now, with your son at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how much were you getting to see him? How often?
Um, not very often, um. I think, what would it be? I don't know, I'm not sure, like, um. I think it was every, every weekend at that point maybe, or, no, it was actually. Not really, we're working towards it, um, so it was like. I think I was seeing him like on a Friday or something and then we'd have to give him back on that day maybe. Because I can remember in Calandra, we were, um. We had him for like half a day and then he would go back with the carers that day, so, yeah.
Over time, did that start to be?
More.
More time?
Um. Yes, but very like, they slow, slowly increased it, like, it wasn't, you know, like. Um, it's not like they gave him back like. You know, every weekend or it was like, you get, you know, two hours with him this time and then like three. So, yeah.
And then sometime last year, the order that the department was seeking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was a change from seeking a long-term order.
Mm-hmm.
To eighteen years to a shorter term order.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you recall why it was that that happened?
Um. They had no case, um, they. I don't really know, like, why it changed from like, you know, um. Eighteen years to, to these eighteen years to like, you know, six months or whatever it was, um, I don't really know. They, they just said that they were worried about my mental health, that's all they said.
With your mental health, around the time when the order was, that was being sought was changed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, were you still seeing Cultural Healing to help with your mental health?
Yeah.
And do you have other, um, medication and treatment still being provided?
Yeah.
And were you able to stabilise your mental health at that time?
Um, yes.
And then. After the order that was being sought changed, um, the matter went back to court, you've told us in a statement that. An order was made, a short-term order was made.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that order's finished now?
Uh, yes, yeah.
And your son's been back with you?
Yeah.
When did he come back?
Uh, I think it was twenty eighteen, like, November, pretty sure. Um. Yeah.
You said twenty.
Oh, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yeah, uh, and now he's living back home with you, back in your full-time care?
Yeah.
With your partner and your daughter?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wanna ask you about the, um, your current situation. You're still under a community treatment order?
Uh, yes.
And you've explained in your statement about. And you've explained in your statement about, um, Cultural Healing's helped you with, um, applying for NDIS?
Uh, yeah, yeah, they, they did the whole thing, like, I didn't even have to lift a finger, really, um. I needed NDIS, um, but I couldn't, it was unsuccessful, my application the first time. Um, so Culture Healing helped, um, get it back on the, on its feet and, um, yeah, the NDIS now.
And with the NDIS, um, like, are you able to access now some services and things that you couldn't before?
Uh, yes, like OT, um, occupational therapists, um, just support, like, everyday support, um. Yeah.
Now, I asked you earlier and you told us about having a relapse plan.
Hmm.
Um, can you tell us about how that, that was put in place, how it came to be?
Um, I think Culture Healing, um, made me do like a relapse plan, just in case anything was to happen, um. I I think I've had a couple of relapse plans, so this is, um, yeah.
Now, things at home now are a lot more stable?
Yeah.
Um.
Oh, we have support around us, so we've got heaps of, um, heaps of, um, like, support and, um, help around us if we need it.
Hmm. What sort of other supports have you got now?
Um, we have a lot more family behind us, um, more understanding of, about our mental health, um. Um, just, we have a lot of cultural, um, like, support as well.
Now, I, I want to ask you then about, um, things that you talk about in your statement about things that you recommend should be done differently.
Yeah.
Things that the Commissioners might, um, look at about things that could be done better. Um, one of the things you talk about was parents having an independent advocate.
Mm-hmm.
You just tell us about that. What do you think would be important about that?
Um, that would be so important, like, if you had someone to speak to, um, is that like, um, is that like, um, having someone on your behalf, like, speak to the department as well?
Yes.
Yeah, um, it just, it'd make everything a lot more easier, um. Just communicating with the department and, um, making sure everything's on track again, um. And anything you don't understand, like, um, the court side of things, that may be able to help, um, yeah.
And what about the things you talk about, about how the way the department speaks or communicates to the parents?
Yeah.
Is that something you think could be done better?
Um, yeah.
How do you think it could be done better?
Um. I know, like, less judgmental, maybe, um.
And what about the words and the language that are used?
Uh, yeah, I don't, so, um.
You told us before, as an example, that department would say contact, whereas you might describe it as having family time or mummy time with your son.
Yeah.
Is that an example of the sort of thing that you think would be a better way to speak from the department's point of view?
Yeah, um, yeah. So.
And last thing that you talked about, one of the things, last things you talked about in this statement was about Cultural Healing, the program.
Hmm.
Um, that it, it should be expanded, be available to all Indigenous people wherever, not just in the Sunshine Coast.
Yeah, I hope so, um, it would help everyone, um, like, it'd benefit a lot of people, I think, um, yeah.
Yes, yes, thank you, Anne. That's all the questions that I had.
Thank you. Um, do any Commissioners have any questions they would like to put to Anne?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I'll assume that none of the parties who've been given leave to appear wish to ask any questions unless they let us know, so I'll allow for a short silence to see if anybody speaks up. But in the absence of that, Anne, thank you very much for coming and giving evidence, we appreciate it's been difficult for you to come down to Brisbane, as you've explained, to give your evidence. We're very grateful for doing that and for sharing with us your experiences. We very mu, we thank you very much and we wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr Crowley, what do we do now?
Chair, the next witness we have scheduled is Christine May. Uh, Ms May is present here in the hearing room to give her evidence, and the plan is that she would commence her evidence now. Uh, we would break for lunch in between, around twelve thirty, and then she would resume and complete her evidence after lunch.
Thank you. We'll wait for Ms May to appear on the screen. Ms May, thank you for coming to the Commission today to give, uh, evidence. If you wouldn't mind following the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, who will administer the affirmation to you today.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms May. Mr Crowley will ask you some questions now.
Now, Commissioners, before we commence with Ms May's, uh, evidence, the statement of Ms May is in the Tendel Bundle B, Volume Two, at Tab sixteen. I tender that statement, ask that it be marked as Exhibit eight point two.
Yes.
And the material that's next to the statement is in Tendel Bundle B, in Volume Two, Tabs seventeen to nineteen. Now, I tender that material, if it might be marked as Exhibit eight point two, one to eight point two, three, please.
Yes, that can be done.
Now, Ms May, you've provided that statement to the, um, Commission, an eighteen-page statement, which is dated nineteen November two thousand and twenty. Uh, the contents of that statement are true and correct, best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Uh, I want to ask you some questions about it. Um, first of all, Ms May, if you could just tell us about your own background. Um, tell us first of all where you're, where you're from.
I'm a Warridjiri woman from Wellington, New South Wales. I was born in Kuna Baravun and raised there, and my family moved to, um, Brisbane in the sixties. Um, so I grew up in Logan, in Woodridge, um, I'm the oldest of nine children, and, um, have a passion for my people and do the best I can. I'm the mother of five, grandmother of seventeen, and great-grandmother of eleven.
And you're employed by Queensland Health?
Queensland Health, yes.
What's the position you have?
I have a position, it's called the Advanced Aboriginal Mental Health Worker, with a Cultural Healing program, I've been there fifteen years.
And in terms of your, your, your qualifications and experience, could you just tell us what you have achieved there?
Um, I have various, um, you know, from aged care to social welfare, and I have a degree in Aboriginal health with a specialty of mental health, going to Curtin University in Western Australia.
I want to ask you about Cultural Healing, the Cultural Healing program, um. First of all, that's a program run through Queensland Health?
That's correct.
Where is it available?
Sunshine Coast, so until a couple of years ago, it was the only program, and they've just, um, piloted a program at Gimpie, um, where there's one clinician and one health worker there. That was born out of the need that we couldn't service Gimpie, but we have a large community there that do have serious mental illness, so when they were hospitalized, they had to be brought to Nambur Hospital. We'd go up and give them cultural support, but we couldn't give them case management, community case management, because of the distance between Sunshine Coast and Gimpie, and our program is only for staff, and we cover the whole of the Sunshine Coast from Beerbarum through to just this side of Gimpie, out to, um, Conndale, and all along the coast, Calandra, Kawana, and, um, yeah.
With the four staff?
With the four staff, two Aboriginal, um, advanced mental health workers and two non-Indigenous cl- clinicians at present, but twelve months ago, we were blessed with a Aboriginal psychologist that joined the team, but unfortunately, she fell pregnant, has been on maternity leave, so she's due back in January, which we're looking forward to.
It, just tell us about Cultural Healing, the program, what does it actually do and provide?
Cultural Healing, um, can, um, do the lot that the whole service does. We like to try and do our own intake, our own assessments, um, and case management, um. We have a part-time psy- psychiatrist attached to the team now, um, and she, she, um, just works with all our clients now, whereas before we had to work with four or five psychiatrists across the service, now we just have the one, so it's that continuity of care, um, which is culturally correct and the way that we should be working.
Hmm. You talked about wanting to do your own intake, how do, how do clients get referred or access Cultural Healing?
So, people can self-refer, a family mem- member can refer, the community can refer, the service refers, um, just about any, we'll take a referral from anywhere, other services, as long as the person knows and agrees to the, um, referral. If it's someone that people thinks really, really unwell, we try and encourage them to get them to the hospital, um, as the first form of intake, so that, you know, we can then gain through that way.
Hmm, so.
Gain support.
Through the hospital?
Through the hospital, through the act team, the mental health team, uh, through the Mahat team at the hospital. And they will do the initial intake and assessment, and usually, um, it involves an inpatient, um, term, and then we will go and engage with them while they're in hospital, and, um, then we will follow them up, so culturally, it's so important to engage, so um, we'll go in with our clinicians, so they get to know our clinicians, they get to know us, we get to know their story. Um, we work with the hospital team and knowing what their di- diagnosis is, what the treatment is, so that we can follow that up. And, um, we also speak about a lot of Aboriginal people can be really sensitive to, um, medication, so sometimes it's not, it doesn't, um, keep their mental illness at bay, so we have to look at other medications that's more appropriate. So then we'll follow them through, once they're discharged, we'll follow them up at home, and we'll do that by home visits, and then they can come to the clinic if they want to, um, but mainly, we like to try and follow them up at home and make it more culturally appropriate and sensitive, and we'll do a cultural gathering, so we know who their mob is, um, where they grew up, how they grew up, who they grew up connected with, um, which we think's a very uh, important part to go along with the clinical assessment, because it gives you a greater understanding of where that person's from, who their mob's from, and what their practices were.
And just about the referrals and the ways in which people can access the service, uh, what about the, the Department of Child Safety, are they a referrer?
Um, they have referred a couple of times, um, in the past, if they're concerned about somebody's, um, mental wellbeing. Um, they have referred and will intervene and will follow that person up, um, child safety can can sort of direct that person that they need to have contact with us, um, usually because their children are on an order or at risk of being removed, so, um, it's not always in a successful engagement at first, um, because child safety's involved, so straight up, there's a little bit of a negativity, um, where that person's concerned, so it's about alleviating their fears that we'll walk beside them, um, we'll support them the best we can, and, um, get them in touch with the most important people that can help them navigate that child safety system.
Now, how important is establishing that trust with the client in the work that you do?
If we don't establish a trust and a cultural connection and a create, you know, that, um, cultural safety, then they, y- you can't work with our mob, because they need that to feel safe, they need to know that you're looking after them culturally. Um, and that's an ongoing thing, like, that's an everyday thing, um, because, you know, the clients that we work with have a serious mental illness, some are social, emotional, cultural and spiritual. The ones that do have a serious mental illness, um, there's always that, that paranoia there and that mistrust there, and so you've got to try and make them feel safe, all the time respected, um, heard, and you've got to sort of advocate strongly for them, otherwise, they cannot nega- navigate the systems themselves, especially child safety.
Now, you've spoken about today, and also in your statement, about the importance of both the cultural intervention and support, as well as the, the clinical assessment side of things, and that the two have to be in combination.
They do.
Just explain about that, why that's so important for First Nations people?
Because, like, we work beside a lot of non-Indigenous clinicians at different times, and we have to build, well, I know myself, I have to build a relationship and I have to trust that person before I'm gonna let them, you know, into the lives of one of my community members, because, you know, that's, that's my credibility with our mob. And I, I need to be able to trust a clinician to work with our mob to do the best job possible for that client. Um, I'm very protective over my community, regardless of where they're from or who they are, and I try to track down where they're from, so I can get a better understanding of their cultural ways, because mine are different. Um, and so that I can work more effectively with them, and that I could train our clinicians up and create that cultural awareness um, about their upbringing, style and generation, trauma, the intergenerational stuff, um, and all the negativities where child safety's concerned as well, so that they gain, gain a better understanding of not just the mental health, um, disposition of the person, but also the cultural, um, growing up of that person, I guess, and everything that's impacted on their lives, their family's life, their community life.
You talked about doing the cultural gathering, uh, that information that's being obtained through that process. Um, is that, just tell us, who's it made available to?
So, the cultural gathering tool, um, forms, it's in where the clinical assessment is. So, anybody that works in mental health in Queensland can Google, you know, like, put into the SIMA program that they want to read the assessment, but they'll notice that there's also a culture, cultural gathering there. So it's any, anybody that works in Queensland Health in the mental health system can read that cultural information, that's why I think it's such a valuable document, and that we do the best job we can to put as much cultural information in, especially down where the recommendations is, a recommendation, if there's not an Aboriginal mental health worker available, um, then the recommendations, hopefully they'll read them and, and follow those recommendations to a better way of working with that client.
In the situation where the referral comes from the Department of Child Safety, do they have access to any of that information?
No, they don't. They ask us, and we can tell them, and we try and provide as much information as possible, um. I don't think it's always heard or listened to or taken into consideration, and and I'm very passionate about walking beside. into consideration and, and I'm very passionate about walking beside our mob that child safety is involved with, to make sure they are heard.
Explained in your statement about that you do have a strong passion as a, someone to advocate for First Nations people, particularly in, in areas like child safety, but also housing and other areas where there are disadvantage.
That's correct.
In looking at the child safety area, um, you've talked in your statement about having seen many times the injustices in relation to removal of children and a lack of commitment to reunification.
That's correct.
Just explain about those two aspects, the removal and reunification and what you mean by having seen the injustices.
Um, there's been a lot of families that I've worked with, like in the Logan area and the Beanley area where children were removed, that didn't need removing, that just needed, the families needed a little bit of support. Those children went into the system and then it, you know, it could take two, five years for that family to fight the children back. The health workers were involved with those families like twice a week or once a week and, and knew that what child safety were being told wasn't correct. So then that's when I started being a strong voice and advocating. So then, um, sorry, can you repeat the question?
So I was asking you about both the removal initially and then also the reunification.
But so I've seen different families have children removed and I've seen the different struggles of reunification. Say for Anne's case, the struggles that she had to try and fight to get her child back as opposed to other people have seemed to have, don't have that struggle. And to me it comes down to the relationship they form with the child safety officer. When I see the interactions of that person and then negativity and interactions with another person like Anne. And it could be that a misunderstanding everyone assumes because they, someone has a mental illness that they're not capable of caring for the children. I don't know. But I've seen the different relationships formed with different people I've worked with and it's not always been, um, a straightforward case from the child safety's view.
You've also spoken in your statement about, um, the, the impacts of removal, um, the emotional, mental health impacts for the family. Can you just explain about that from the, the child's point of view, type of things that you're talking about there?
So in cultural healing, we do have a lot of people that are referred to us, whether, um, it's depression or trauma or borderline personality. But in most of those cases, it's been a disconnection that's been caused by them being removed at a younger age by child safety. And then some were re-unified with their families, some weren't, but it wasn't a successful reunification, especially if it was a very young child or a newborn baby. They develop a lot of behavioral stuff, um, attachment, um, issues, um, um, what's the other one? Um, there's been quite a few things. Anyway, a lot of our clients have had contact with child safety at a very early age. Um, sorry, I'm just a little bit.
What are you describing there? Are you talking about your clients themselves have been children in the child protection system?
That's correct.
The parents that you do see, that your clients who are parents, where they are now involved with child protection for their own children, um, how do you see the effects of removal upon them?
Um, it does cause a lot of trauma. It causes some suicidal ideation. So, uh, really increases the mistrust of government services, especially child safety. Um, we have worked with quite a few families where the parent was from stolen generation and there was that intergenerational trauma, the way their children were, were, um, come into the mental health system was directly related to that stolen generation, that mistrust, that, um, not being able to parent children. Um, when they come out of the system, they don't have any parenting ideas on how to parent. Then they have children, those children are removed and then their children have had children and those children have been removed. So we have a lot of clients that have that trauma and have developed borderline personalities, um, that are involved with the mental health system due to that removal.
And what about the effects on, from a cultural point of view, where there is removal like that?
We've got a lot of clients that don't know who their mob are, don't know who their family are, don't know where they're from, um, have that lack of identity and connection. But they know they're Aboriginal and they just want to, I have helped quite a few find where their families are and where they're from. Um, it impacts on their mental wellbeing because the cultural identity of someone is their spirituality. And if your spirituality isn't intact from a cultural aspect, then it's really hard to be able to go on every day and maneuver what you have to maneuver. That connection is so important to us as Aboriginal people, that it's almost like it's our breathing, it's part of our being, it's, it's who we are. And if we don't have that identity and that connection, then we have a lot of other issues that we have impact on our lives, like depression or mental illness in other forms, anxiety.
Just in terms of, of your role within cultural healing, um, can you just tell us a bit more about where, um, cultural healing has a, a role in referring a client onto other services? How that happens and what sort of things cultural healing can facilitate?
So when we have a client, um, open to us, then we assess their mental illness, we provide, um, case management. And then we look at the other areas in their life that they may, might need support. And then we'll talk about it as a team on what we think will be the best way forward. Who would we think or what service we think would be best connected to that person while they're still open to us so that we ensure that there's an engagement, that we're sure that they're building a relationship with that service. Doesn't always work, um, because of a mistrust that the client might have or the service may not have the person that, the person that our client's connected to. So in Anne's case, when I first met her and she was in hospital, we did a referral to TRP, which is a transitional recovery program, um, for people with a mental illness where they live in a small home. And then went on from there, you know, gradually to independent living. Um, it's about trying to work with people to develop insight into the mental illness and why they need these services in place.
I'll, I'll ask you some more about Anne's case.
Mr. Crowley, uh, Mr. Crowley.
Yes, Chair.
Sorry.
Uh, Chair, I was going to just say that I'll ask the witness more about Anne's case a bit later, but we might have, if it's convenient now, a break for lunch.
The, uh, system can be checked to make sure that we're hearing clearly at this end what Ms. May is saying. So thank you very much, Ms. May. Thank you. We'll take an hour for lunch. We'll resume at one thirty-five Brisbane time, two thirty-five Sydney time.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.
Yes, Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. May, I want to ask you now about Anne's case and the work that you did with her. Um, you first came into contact with Anne when she was admitted to the Nambur Hospital.
That's correct.
You just tell us how that came about.
She was admitted to Nambur General Hospital, um, and then Cultural Healing Program were informed that she was there. So we went up and met with her and started slowly building a relationship. She wasn't overly interested in seeing col-, uh, you know, um, clinicians at that time because she was quite distraught about her son and needed some reassurances about her son. So we just kept going every day and visiting with her and building a relationship with her. And then just, um, started talking her through what was happening and trying to develop a rapport, but also some insight into what was going on.
That initial contact, you, Cultural Healing were informed that, that Anne was there at the hospital. Um, who makes the referral or contacts Cultural Healing?
Um, at that time, I think, um, Ward LGE or GE, she might've been in Ward GE, um, they contacted us to let us know that she'd been brought in. And she wasn't, um, engaging very well with their clinical staff and that there. So they informed us so that we could go up and meet with her.
You spoke about the building that rapport and the trust. Um, how important is that at that stage when your service is speaking to a client?
Culturally, it's the most important thing because if there's not that cultural engagement and warmth from, um, the health workers with a new client, then the clin- clinical teams can't really make much of an edgeway with our clients because of, um, communication styles, because of misunderstanding of the, um, cultural issues that may be impacting on their lives, mistrust. So it's super important that the health workers start that engagement.
Now, while in the hospital, what was the, the role or the support being provided by Cultural Healing?
We would go up every day and meet with her and just spend some time with her, listening to her concerns, um, trying to develop a plan with her. Her biggest concerns at that time was she didn't understand what was happening with her and she was worried about her son.
And did, did you have any involvement at that stage with, uh, the Department of Child Safety?
Um, with other clients at that stage, but until we got to know what was happening, um, we didn't. Um, and then we would, after that, then we just made contact to ensure that there was some form of contact or what their plan was in relation to, um, her and her son having contact, um, which was very minimal because the carer at that, uh, immediate time would bring, um, her son up to the hospital for a short visit. But given that she was still quite psychotically unwell, sometimes those visits lasted an hour, sometimes half an hour, depending on her level of distress. And then, um, he would be taken back to the carers and, and it was that way for quite some time.
Now, after Anne was discharged from the hospital, for a time Cultural Healing was still involved with Anne whilst she was in the Sunshine Coast area?
Always involved with her until she moved out of area.
Yes.
Um, stayed in contact with her. That's our job, um, to case manage her, to make her feel culturally safe, sensitive and heard. To, um, she'd spoken to us about what was happening and we're trying to communicate with child safety. So a decision was made, I need to attend those meetings with her. So that's when I started attending the meetings with her.
These are meetings with the?
Department of Child Safety.
And the Department, the child safety officer who has Anne's case? Meeting with the child safety officer handling Anne's case?
Yeah, and meetings at their office at Marichido.
What was your role in going to those meetings?
Culturally support her, ensure that they were getting the correct information to make sure that, um, she was getting the correct information from them. Um, because there is a communication, um, barriers there with Anne, um, and misinterpretation sometimes. Um, and some of the information child safety were trying to pass on to her wasn't done in a way that she could understand what they were saying either. So I would go to make sure that, and she was relaying quite some distressing stuff to us from phone calls and that with child safety. So a decision was made that we would just keep asking them for meetings and keep trying to, um, find out what's going on. It was probably about the fourth meeting into it, I realized that she needed legal support. And then it took quite some time to convince her for me to contact the Aboriginal Legal Service, um, Family Law Solicitor for her to get the support that she's going to need. So the two of us could walk beside her to help her with what was happening.
And, and that came about through you contacting the Aboriginal Legal Service?
Yes.
With Anne's consent?
Definitely, yes.
Now, before you made that contact, do you know if she was aware of the need to get legal representatives or that she could?
No, she certainly didn't know that she could and didn't know that she was entitled to it and didn't know who to contact.
Just in terms of the timing, when you made contact with the Aboriginal Legal Service about representation, was this when Anne was still at the Sunshine Coast before she'd left, left the catchment area or was it when she returned?
No, this was not long after she'd been discharged from hospital from her first, um, episode. So this was very early in the beginning.
Mr. Crowley, sorry, can I interrupt? We've got some noise outside and the interpreters are finding it hard to hear. So if you wouldn't mind both speaking up, I apologize for the outside noise, but I can see the interpreters are having difficulty hearing. So because you're facing away from them, if you could just speak up a little. Thank you.
Yes. You're just explaining that that was not long after Anne had come out of the hospital from her first admission, when she had the diagnosis of schizophrenia?
That's correct.
But after some time, Anne has then left the catchment area, which was serviced by Cultural Healing?
That's correct.
Now, did you have any contact with her during that time she was out of your area?
We did make a few calls to her to see how she was going in her new area, how the mental health team was happening, uh, going down there. At that stage, she said, oh, she very rarely seen them. Um, but, and, but the engagement was still to happen with her because she would just move to a new area where there was no cultural support.
In your statement, you, you talk about knowing that she would eventually be lost to follow-up. Just explain why you have that view and what you mean by that?
Cultural Healing's concern in the first incident of her moving out of the area was that she herself would disengage with the mental health service. And if she gave them the perception that she was okay, that she would probably be taken off the treatment authority and then closed to the service. That's what was concerning us, but it was outside our control.
Was there any service in, in the Brisbane area that Cultural Healing could put Anne in contact with that might provide a similar service to your own?
No, especially not to the area where she moved to.
Then sometime later, you were aware that Anne had been involved in a, another serious episode and, um, she was again then back in the Sunshine Coast area after that. Do you then resume contact with her?
After the incident and she did make contact with us when she was recovering just before she was discharged from hospital. And, um, she, her words were, "I should never have moved away. I moved away to get away from you because I thought..." Like if she moved away from Cultural Healing, then mental health wouldn't follow her up. That's what she was trying to achieve. But she said, "I realize now that the support you give me I need and I'm coming back to the Sunshine Coast and I'm not going to move away again."
And she did that?
She has done that.
And she maintained contact with Cultural Healing since?
Constant contact.
And you're still her caseworker?
Yes, the team's her case managers, the two health workers and the two clinicians. But, um, there's been a recent change in medication because she wanted to trial something else. So the agreement was that we would visit twice weekly and phone call weekly and that she had to have blood tests and she's com- she had to have blood tests and she's com- she is complying with that. So slowly developing some insight and a better understanding of her mental health.
And in terms of as- assisting her, if she does have another psychotic episode or feels unwell, has Cultural Healing been involved in, in developing a relapse plan?
We have, we've worked with both her and a partner. Um, he contacts us. It's taken a while to build that rapport. Um, he contacts us if he thinks there's a little bit of a risk there or that she's become a little bit more paranoid, um, and she has given him permission to do that, whereas before she wouldn't. Um, so, um, he does make contact with us, but recently, probably the last two months, she makes contacts with us and say, and tells us that she's feeling a little bit more paranoid than before, um, "I might need to see you" or she'll just talk things through with us. We'll put her on to one of our clinicians if we're really concerned and they'll talk her through and then we'll go, "We need to visit her today or we'll come down and visit you tomorrow." So we've developed that kind of relationship now, um, that she feels quite safe with.
Now, in terms then of where Anne has progressed from to this point, you speak in your statement about her coming a long way from where she initially was. Um, just tell us about that as to what you see that she's achieved from when she was first contacted by your service in the hospital until now?
She's developed insight into the fact that she does have a mental illness, that she is in need of mental health support. A big part of that mental health support is the cultural support that wraps around that, that she has done parenting and she's a very good mum. Um, if she's not sure about anything, she will call us and we will offer her some solutions or s- some suggestions on a way forward, that she now agrees with her partner that he is able to contact us and speak to us about things if they're not too good. And, um, recently when he wanted a change of medication and he went off medication, he felt things weren't too good. So they both come to us and we put some short-term management, case management in place for him. And, um, he's seen our treating psychiatrist and he was restarted on a different medication. So they've both come a long way.
In Anne's case, you're aware that with respect to her son, that the department applied for a long-term order until he was 18?
That's correct.
Were you involved then with Anne in supporting her throughout that process?
My involvement with her was she was distressed about, um, their intention. So I kept trying to talk her through the fact that if an 18 order, 18, an order went in place till he's 18, does not mean that he cannot live with her and it doesn't mean that a lot of other things can't happen. So after reassuring her of that, then I suggested it was time to get Aboriginal Legal Service involved again, which she said, "Oh, yes, please." So we made that phone call and they re-engaged with her.
And then they were involved in acting for her in that matter after?
That's correct.
Now, in, in the case of other clients that you have, you've been involved in similar types of ways with child safety for those clients where they have, um, the same type of issues raised by child safety and the same type of applications being made?
That's correct.
Um, are you able to tell us how many clients at the moment the service might have where parents are in that situation?
Seven.
And in those cases, are, are you involved in that similar type of, um, support and advocacy?
Uh, we're involved and there's another service now called Refocus, so they're involved as well. Um, so we communicate a lot with Refocus, um, and with Child Safety. And we go along to the meetings and look at what their expectations are of that person, what the identified issues were and how best we can support. And that's how we've led a couple of our young mums, um, with children in care into Lily House, um, because then they get that extra wraparound support from Lily House.
Just in relation to those cases and including Anne's case, does the department invite Cultural Healing to come to those, those meetings and those sessions where discussions are had about the way forward or the plan for the child?
Um, after we've initiated contact or after they've ma- been made aware that they're a, a client of ours, or if we've called to find out what's happening, what does this client need to do, what else needs to be involved in, um, assisting them to move towards reunification, so what we can assist them with. So yeah, so we've, one young woman who's an open client, lives on the Sunshine Coast, but unfortunately her children are in care in the Redcliffe area, which is out of our area, and a totally different child safety office. So we've been in contact with her father, who, um, is the primary carer of those children at the minute. So we're just helping her get to the point where we can start supporting her towards some form of reunification or at the moment increased contact with her children. The, um, another client that's in Lily House is that we go to the meetings with child safety and we try to develop a plan with them and the client on the best way forward from here, um, increasing contact, um, between the mother and the child. Um, and that is happening, um, now.
You spoke earlier about the importance of, um, culturally appropriate services and supports. From your experience and your view, does the, to the department child safety officers that you've worked with in these cases, are they providing that type of support?
I don't feel they always do. There's like, each office has usually one, um, indigenous worker there to cover a massive caseload, but then they're employed by child safety with the same, um, working under child safety policies. So I guess they're not as free to work from a cultural aspect as we are or to engage the way that Cultural Healing can engage when child safety's involved. So it's more, I think they're more limited in what they can and can't do. Um, and it doesn't give the client, um, opportunity to, if they don't engage with that person, of having somebody else that they can engage with. And I think that's why Refocus is sta- is, is another organisation where people can engage with. Not everyone wants to engage with a service that you refer them to. So then we will step back in and we will try and support them through that process until something else can be put in place. If they remain open to us, then we'll stay involved.
But Refocus, can you just tell us about that, who they are and what they provide?
Um, Refocus is an Aboriginal organisation, um, Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander organisation. They are a family and wellbeing, um, service. I think they were born out of the old recognised entity, um, with indigenous children and child safety, but they've now got quite a few, um, programmes happening for young people and, um, for families to try and, um, prevent children from going into care, to work with families. So they're trying to do that early intervention and prevention with child safety.
Now, I, I want to ask you about this. In your statement, you've given an example about how you consider a, a parent with a disability having a time when they feel unwell, you equate that to something being similar to a parent who has a physical injury like a broken leg and for a time period they need a support until they get better. Um, just tell us about from your point of view and your experience, how that is different to how you see the child safety interactions with those parents?
I'll just explain what I meant. Um, we're trying to break down the stigma of mental health, especially with Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. So a lot of the work we do is we say, you know, like, you have an illness, it's impacting on your brain, the same as diabetes impacts on a different part of your body, or if you break your leg or you have heart disease, it's impacting on a different type of your body. So that, a lot of our clients understand it when we explain it that way. So I feel that if a parent with a mental illness, as their disability, um, has a psychotic episode and goes to hospital, um, it was the same as when a parent, you know, becomes unwell, whether it's a broken leg or not, and they're in period, in hospital for a period of time. You know, there needs to be a service there that can support that without long orders on their children. If I broke my leg, I wouldn't have an order taken out on my child. So I can't see why somebody with a mental illness, unless they're deemed as being quite dangerous to their children, should have an order taken out on their child for two years and have to fight to get that child back when they can go into hospital, have treatment, become well, be reassessed and then a smooth transition with their children with a wraparound support, to me, should happen.
And in terms of things that you would like to see done better, you would recommend would be positive outcomes, that type of investment in wraparound services is something that you particularly see as important?
Definitely. More cultural engagement, um, to train our professionals up, to make them more culturally aware and culturally sensitive, to have service that, services that can, um, provide a wraparound where the children can stay until a period of time, um, when the parent's able to resume their parenting role and then support them for a period of time, um, until they are able to take that role on completely.
And the Cultural Healing Programme, which you're involved with, um, you said in your statement that you'd like to see that expanded and extended throughout the whole state?
Definitely. It would make life much easier, I think, for our clients. It would make, um, create more of a cohesive service, given that our service is online Queensland-wide, so we're able to follow people through. And if everybody knows the story and Cultural Healing was in other areas, then we're able to support each other with a transition of care if a client moves to another area. Henceforth could possibly prevent what happened with Anne.
The final thing I want to ask you about, you've also said in your statement that you think there should be mandatory cultural support and legal representation of First Nation parents with disability who are involved in the child protection system.
Definitely.
Why do you say that?
Because of what we went through with Anne and, and how her psychosis prevented us engaging like Aboriginal Legal Service in the beginning. If she had have had an advocate there from the beginning and a legal representative there from the beginning, then she may not have more got, had to go through that lengthy process with child safety. And she wouldn't have had all that, um, um, different messages she was getting from different workers was really confusing her. So you'd have that continuity of care and you'd be able to progress so that she would, the, the client would see then that things were progressing so they wouldn't feel so much like they were fighting against them to keep their children.
Yes, thank you, Ms May. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll ask if any of the commission, Commissioner Mason?
Hi, yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for coming today, um, to give your evidence. Uh, I think you've, you've said this in your, uh, statement as well, um, as today in giving evidence at the hearing. Um, talking about cultural safety, uh, Cultural Healing Service and the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander, uh, Legal Service. In your view, are they critical services that should be under an arrangement of being, uh, almost mandated to be present for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people who come into interaction with mental health services, but particularly where there may be, um, factors to do with child protection? Um, I, I would use the term that they are opt-out services, so they're always there and the client can opt out at any time if they want, but their first, the first priority is that they have knowledge that, that those services are available and it gets explained to them and then it's their choice to opt out. Do you think that would have been helpful for, uh, this, uh, this witness?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Accomson?
Yes, um, may I ask you a question? Um, so you've got this service on the Sunshine Coast and you said it started at Gimpie, but that seems to be, they're the only places. Um, so how did you begin? What, what's the genesis of your service so that, as you say, if it could be replicated elsewhere, it could be done?
Um, Cultural Healing began with one indigenous worker, was the mental health worker on the Sunshine Coast, but there was that stigma and he wasn't connected to the mental health service, but there was a stigma with our mob around mental illness and mental health. So he was identifying there was a massive gap, so he went to the mental health service and asked for a clinician, one specific clinician, that he could start taking out into the community to get recognised in the community, to create that cultural safety. So, um, a nurse put a hand up, so she came part-time across to go out with him to get known and it wasn't long after that, a caseload started developing because that trust was developing. So it wasn't long after that, they realised that she needed to go full-time with him and then he resigned, but there was still that stigma around, uh, mental health and another health worker was employed, sorry. So there was still that stigma. So that's when they did community consultation and they looked at the then 1990s, I think it was the 1996 Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Mental Health Strategy, Queensland Health Mental Health Strategy. That's what Cultural Healing was aligned with and that's the way it operated and the community identified it had to have mental health taken out of it. And that's how cultural, the name Cultural Healing Programme was born from the community.
Thank you.
Commissioner McPhion?
Um, no, thank you.
Ms May, thank you very much for coming to give evidence. We do appreciate the detailed statements provided and the evidence that you've given today. Thank you very much for your assistance to the Royal Commission. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr Crowley, do we go immediately to the next witness or are we going to have a break?
Uh, Chair, it might be, it might be prudent to have just a short break. The next witness is Commissioner June Oscar. Uh, she will be giving her evidence by, um, video link and perhaps while we just ensure that that's in place, it might be a good idea just to have a couple of minutes, if we could, please.
Um, perhaps what we might do is have a 10-minute break, just to make sure everything is in order. Then although I see that Commissioner Oscar is right there looking ready, ready to go.
If we're ready to go.
Commissioner Oscar, are you, uh, are you hearing us and ready, and ready to proceed with your evidence? Well, I don't think we can hear you, which may mean you need to put your, to unmute, whatever, unmute whatever needs to be unmuted.
Could I just say, Chair and Commissioners, we might withdraw at this stage as last witness doesn't concern us, we have instructions still to do.
Yes, thank you, but that's fine. You certainly have permission to withdraw. Uh, what I suggest is we do have the five or six minutes and then we can sort out whatever the technical issue might be. So we'll adjourn for two minutes and...
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Crowley.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner, the next witness we... Thank you, Chair. Commissioner, the next witness we the next witness we have is Commissioner June Oscar, the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Social Justice Commissioner.
Commissioner Oscar, thank you very much for coming to give evidence today. Uh, I will ask you please to follow the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate for the purpose of taking the affirmation. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Commissioner Oscar, uh, Mr Crowley will now ask you some questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Before we commence with Commissioner Oscar's evidence, I just wanted to make a short statement. Uh, as might be expected, given the pre-commissioned work of our commissioners in the disability sector and in First Nations areas. From time to time, some of the commission, commissioners will know of a witness or have had involvement in an organisation or an association referred to in the evidence. And that is the case with Commissioner Oscar. Commissioner McKeown came to know Commissioner Oscar through their work together as commissioners at the Australian Human Rights Commission for a period from April two thousand and seventeen until April two thousand and nineteen. And Commissioner Mason knows of Commissioner Oscar through her work in First Nations, including her work with the Weyyani Uthangani Women's Voices Project, a project which is referred to in a number of places in Commissioner Oscar's statement. Now, given Commissioner Mason is a member of a reference group for the Women's Voices Project, she has voluntarily and of course with respect, prudently taken the decision not to participate in any discussions or inquiries or the formulation of any recommendations which focus on that group or to enter any discussions regarding matters concerning the Women's Voices Project in order to avoid any conflict of interest or apprehension of bias.
Thank you for that.
Commissioners, the, uh, statement of Commissioner Oscar is in tender bundle, uh, part C at tab one. I tendered that statement and asked that it be marked as exhibit eight point three.
Yes.
And the materials that are next to the statement are in tender bundle C at tabs two to seven, and I asked that they be tendered and received into evidence and marked exhibits eight point three point one to eight point three point seven.
Yes, thank you. That can be done.
Now, Commissioner Oscar, we've, you just heard that I've, um, referred to you as being the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Social Justice Commissioner at the Australian Human Rights Commission. Uh, that's a role you've had since April of two thousand and seventeen.
Yes.
I'll, I'll ask you some more about that, but first, Commissioner, could you tell us a bit about yourself, about, uh, where you come from?
Uh, thank you, Mr Crowley. Uh, hello, everyone. Yalomorulango, good day in Bunuba. Thank you for this opportunity to appear on this very important, uh, topic and inquiry. I'm Nyangili. That's my skin, my buru, which identifies me as a woman born to a Naga mother. In my kinship system, my law that identifies who we are and who we belong to. I come from the Bunuba people here in Fitzroy Valley, which is the southernmost point of Bunuba country in the central Kimberley. Bunuba is my first language. English is my third language. So I come to you from fifty-eight years of living in two worlds, the world of my people, the historical, traditional life ways of Bunuba people, the contemporary and modern society we live in and navigate our existence as Bunuba people, as Indigenous people of this country. I currently am Australia's Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Social Justice Commissioner, previous to the position of CEO of a local Women's Resource Centre based in Fitzroy Crossing called Maninwandi Gora, which is meaning in the Wamajari language, belonging to all women. And I held a position as CEO for twelve years in responding to the needs and aspirations and the rights of women of the five language groups of the Fitzroy Valley region on the issues that impact them, which one of the issues was the impact of early life trauma and the population living with unique and complex needs uh, affected by alcohol use in, by pregnant mothers in, of children now living with, uh, additional needs. So I come from a community that is strong culturally, linguistically and has a strong network of kinship and family. And historically, Fitzroy Valley has produced some of the state's or the nation's great Aboriginal leaders. And so I come from this community that has all its strengths, but all its challenges of colonisation and its impact, policies, structures, the institutions that have been imposed on the lives of over four and a half thousand Aboriginal people who call this area home. And today, all of those families, all of those language groups are living with additional needs that impact and challenges us daily across all generations. So it is from that reality, that place of belonging that I come to you. And I bring the voices of my community and those communities from across Australia on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, you've, you've talked about in your statement, a project that you were involved in, um, in two thousand and seventeen, the Weyyani Uthangani Project. I wonder if you could just tell us a bit about what that was and what it involved?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. Um, Weyyani Uthangani is meaning women's voices in my Bunuba language. Being the first Aboriginal woman into the role of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Social Justice Years in, in a social justice commissioner position in around twenty-five years since the inception, I believed it was important to honour and respect and hear the voices of Australia's First Nations women and girls and to elevate their voices into this role and into focus over my five-year term on the issues that are of priority, that are of significance to every Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander women and girls in our country. It had been thirty-four years since Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander women and girls were engaged in a national engagement process. And that was commissioned by the Department of Aboriginal Affairs in nineteen eighty-six. So thirty-four years of not having access to a process as a collective to give voice on the issues of importance and significance to women and girls. I thought it was timely that since coming into this role, that I acknowledge that and that I elevate and create a process to elevate the voices of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander women and girls.
Now, Commissioner, in that process, you and your, uh, project team travelled all around the country to visit communities in every state and territory to speak with women and girls about issues that mattered to them as First Nations people.
Yes, that's correct, Mr Crowley. We visited fifty communities across the country, from the Torres Straits to Tasmania, to Central Australia and communities in the APY land and the tri-state area. We visited every state and territory. We visited, uh, women who were incarcerated in some of the, um, prisons in, in, across the country, as well as juvenile detention centres to give access to young women, young girls who were, uh, in these facilities. We covered, uh, women in small and remote communities, very remote communities, regional centres, urban centres and city communities. So we had access to a diverse range of community settings that, uh, women were living in at the time. And we heard from many generations of, uh, women, senior women and young women.
Uh, Commissioner, the, the project that, work that was done, uh, those consultations have formed part of what you've referred to and drawn upon in your statement to further add to your own experience and extensive background in, in relation to the issues that you talk about.
Yes.
I want to ask you about some of those, those issues that you've referred to. First of all, can I start with the idea or the concept of disability for First Nations communities? Um, you've mentioned in your statement that there's a, a different concept within First Nations communities compared to a, a non-first, First Nations community about what disability is and what it means. Could you just explain about that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. Yes, I have, um, provided statements to that point. Uh, my understanding of the difference between how Aboriginal people approach a person born to our family with, uh, what is commonly referred to as disability. We view that person as being a special gift. This is people born into our families with disability. So disabilities from birth. And I'm using the word disability because it is, um, the, the common understood word and is used in this, uh, Royal Commission. We view people with special gifts, special, uh, abilities as unique, as unique gifts. And therefore, our thinking and our respect for the individual is not seen to the lens of limitations and ableism or disableism. It is rather seeing the person with the gifts that we have been presented with. And so begins this whole, uh, way of embracing and acknowledging, uh, individuals in our families and in our communities as having gifts. So we learn from these individuals. We do not pity them or see them as not being able, but rather enabling us to see ourselves, to see our lives and to learn from them. And this is a huge difference between Western society's thinking of, uh, people with unique and complex needs born into our family. And I'm not wanting to generalise, but there may be families within Western society that share the thinking and the approach that Indigenous peoples, um, have and hold, uh, towards people with, um, unique gifts and abilities that are born into our family.
Now, Commissioner, you mentioned earlier about, uh, being involved in advocating in relation to your community about alcohol use and how that might impact um, in different ways. You've mentioned in your, in your statement about being involved in the Lilluwan Project, uh, about fetal alcohol syndrome. Could you just tell us about that, please? What that involved?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. Uh, in two thousand and seven, the women of the Fitzroy Valley made a very historic decision. And it was to apply to the liquor licensing authority in Western Australia to impose alcohol restrictions on the drive-through, the takeaway outlet owned by uh, Lidl Proprietary Limited, which is an Aboriginal-owned company based here in Fitzroy Crossing, which owned the outlet. It was after we had witnessed fifty deaths in our community in one year, the previous year. We were a community that was caught in a rut of grief and loss and sadness. This is what we were all living with at the time. These lives lost, these fifty lives lost during that year were preventable deaths. Many of them were alcohol-related. In two thousand and seven, once we applied to the Women's Resource Centre, Maninwandi Gora, for the alcohol restriction. We were successful in October of that year to have Barry Sargent, Director of Liquor Licensing in, in Western Australia, to undertake his process and make a decision. So we have had alcohol restrictions here at Fitzroy Crossing, preventing the sale of, uh, mid-strength and full-strength alcohol, wine and spirits out of the takeaway license held by Lidl. We then embarked on what we called stage two of this community-driven process of addressing the impact of alcohol on our children. During previous years, there was two hundred and fifty thousand litres of pure ethanol sold into a community of four and a half thousand people. And that equated to every person consuming thirty-four cans of full-strength alcohol. It amounted to around six million dollars profit. Many of the community members who were consuming and purchasing out of the outlet are people who are dependent on Centrelink and Social Services payments. So Centrelink and Social Security payments were holding a business that was killing our community and devastating our children and our future as a community. The children that we witnessed who were attending school were children who were regularly being sent home. being sent home for their behaviour. They were deemed badly behaved and naughty kids. These children were children that were exposed to alcohol in utero. And so these children were being penalised for having cognitive and behavioural disability. We had a community and an education system that did not respond to the needs of these children. I and the women at the Women's Centre decided to approach the George Institute for Global Health, the Westmead Children's Hospital in Sydney, and the Telethon Kids Institute to assist us as a community to undertake a prevalence research of our community on the impact of alcohol in utero of our children, the children with a Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder. It was not the fault of these children that they were being judged on their behaviours without any clinical and educational support provided to them. So we created a partnership between the institutions that are named, and we undertook Australia's first community-driven prevalence research on Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder. The research itself found, and it confirmed what it was that we always knew as a community, that these children who were born to our families were children who are living with cognitive and brain-based disability if you like. And therefore, we needed to understand how best we could assist our family members who had these complex needs. We created a unit within the Women's Resource Centre called Marolo in my local language, Marolo meaning precious and worth nurturing. And we have a unit in there that works with the families of these children. Now, these children are much older and some of them have children of their own. And we still have children coming through our community that have not received the diagnosis. But these children who were part of the Marolo and the Lilluwan Project were children that were able to receive a diagnosis, an educational plan, a health plan, so that everyone knew what their needs were. These children, who I just mentioned are young adults now and have their own children, have never fully received the comprehensive wraparound supports that they need. Some of these children have experienced ongoing mental health issues. There has been the issue of suicidal ideation amongst this cohort. And this has resulted in Moneywadigura Women's Resource Centre, with its partners, establishing the biggest one, the big key, the Biggest One Project, where they're assessing what the needs are of this cohort who are now young adults. And today, sadly, are informed by the Women's Resource Centre, by Moneywadigura, that investment into the response in terms of the needs of these children has not been met by any provider. We do not sit and wait. We still continue on. We still continue on in informing and educating the community at large of the needs of our children who live in our community, our young adults who live in our community, so that we can create meaningful employment opportunities, careers, supports and other needs as they journey through their life. Because Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder is a disorder that is from birth to grave, and there are different needs for all of these individuals throughout their lives. But they are our children, and we will continue to care for them. But all of us, the children, the families and this community, has suffered absolute neglect and abuse and harm by the system itself that is there supposedly to provide supports to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. During the Lilluwan Project, as part of that prevalence study, you've said in your statement that it was identified that the use of alcohol was being exploited as a way of attempting to numb the pain from generational marginalisation, discrimination, continuing poverty and high rates of unemployment. I want to ask you, Commissioner, do you see parallels with those factors with what you've seen in your experience with the child protection systems?
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. There's a couple of things in your invitation for me to comment here. Can you just break that down so that I'm clear with what it is you're asking of me?
Yes. So first of all, Commissioner, what I'm asking you to comment on is how these factors, in your view, may be relevant as drivers in respect of child protection systems and interactions with First Nations families and parents. The first one you've mentioned is generational marginalisation.
Thank you for that. In the experiences of many Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people since contact with the settler society, we have not been treated as human beings. We have not been acknowledged as people with feelings, emotions, structures, systems of living as people occupying this continent before the arrival of Europeans. We have been treated in the most abhorrent ways by settler society, denying us our humanity, dispossessing us of our land. The cruelty administered in our treatment, the dispossession, the dislocation, the punitive treatment that our people had experienced and witnessed and lived with over generations has traumatised our societies, where we have never had that acknowledgement in this nation. We occupied this land. We were treated as if we did not matter. And so discrimination, the marginalisation, the disadvantage and the dispossession has compounded for many generations of families in this country. We have not acknowledged this as a nation. The pain and the trauma of this truth and this reality for many, many Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people has caused us to see so many people looking to seek relief from this pain. Often, we see people self-medicated to numb the pain. The judgements, the negative and hurtful judgements that are made of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who are living with such pain and trauma is so unjust and unfair. And the truth of that and the root causes of that must be spoken about, must be acknowledged in Australia. We are not bad people. We are not people who set out to harm intentionally. We are people who are dealing with generation and decades upon decade of pain and trauma inflicted on our families and our society. It is time that we come to term the truth of this nation, the history of this nation, and have the maturity to embrace in a national discussion around the painful past and the history of this nation. We are to deliver justice and equality and respect for each other and ourselves. We must address the institutions and the system that continues to perpetrate and support policies and approaches and thinking in our country that contribute to the detriment and the pain of our Indigenous peoples.
And Commissioner, just in relation to those issues you've spoken about there, the continuing trauma and intergenerational trauma, discrimination and marginalisation, are they matters that, in your view, must inform the delivery of child protection services in today's society for First Nations people?
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. For anyone engaging in the space of service provision to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples, families, individuals, communities and community organisations, it is compulsory that they have a sound understanding of the history and the treatment of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples and our families and our community, and who we are as Indigenous people. I think it is the responsibility, in fact, I believe and I insist, that anyone engaging in the space where they're interacting with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people be held responsible to ensure that they have undertaken stringent cultural intelligence, leadership, training delivered by Indigenous people to demonstrate their suitability for engaging with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. Because currently, we have, as Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, no input or very little input into those that are making decisions that impact our lives and the lives of our loved ones for the rest of their lives. There is no accountability based on individuals who are making decisions that are harmful and traumatizing, that's affecting many, many families across Australia. We have to change the way policy and systems are designed to engage those peoples who are making life-impacting decisions on our families.
Commissioner, you've spoken in your statement about the over-representation of First Nations people in child protection systems across Australia, and made the observation that that's not a result of isolated incidents, but instead it's the product of a chain of causality with the genesis in commencing with colonisation of this country. I wonder if you could just explain about that, Commissioner, how you see that chain of causality?
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. This is a very sad picture, and it does begin from colonisation and the attitudes towards Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples, and what I have previously provided comment on in regards to the attitudes following and the consequences that affect many of our families over generations. So here we are as a people, living with unresolved trauma that's shared intergenerationally. We have access to world research around the effects of epigenesis and the harmful impacts of trauma unresolved and their lasting impacts on individuals on generations later. We are confronted with policy, we are confronted with systems and structures who do not pay attention and mindfulness to the impacts of all of that on the lives of human beings and the impact that have caused human suffering of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. Rather, we have people who are delivering the policy, implementing the policy, that are punitive measures that punish us for the disadvantage we suffer because of our history. Until we change the systems and the policies and the influencing factors that support these punitive measures, we will continue to see Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples suffer at the hands of people who are neglectful in their duty to bring about justice and equality and respect for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples. Therefore, we will continue to see the discrimination, the injustices and the compounding of trauma for generations to come because of our ability to not acknowledge and create and drive the chain which is so overdue in our country.
Commissioner, in your statement when you've spoken about the Weyyani-Uthangani engagements, you've described how when speaking to women and girls across the country, that in each of those First Nations communities, people have said that they're scared or fearful of the removal of children through child protection interventions and that it's considered and seen as another stolen generation. Could you just explain for us about what's been related to you and how that's being perceived?
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Yes, it was extremely saddening to hear so many voices across this country speak of to hear so many voices across this country speak of the fear of being able to seek out the support that women and girls have a right to seek out, to have a right to access as citizens of our country. The fear instilled within them by those at the front line that deliver the statutory obligations of the child protection system and their single-mindedness around how they deliver that responsibility, which causes fear in the lives of caregivers, of mothers, of grandmothers, of great-grandmothers, that they cannot trust a system that has historically disrespected their ancestors and that continues to violate and disrespect them in the delivery of a citizenship entitled service to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in our country. Why is it that our people are fearful of a system that is supposedly there for our benefit?
Commissioner, you've also stated in your statement that the real issue here is looking at a systemic failure to support families, mothers and children through holistic community supports that would allow a family to stay together. And that without those supports, you consider that First Nations women and families in contact with child protection systems are extremely vulnerable to systemic neglect, violence through those interactions. Can you just explain about that, about what you've referred to there as the systemic issues and the systemic failures?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. I have witnessed a number of families work extremely hard to reconnect family members who have been removed at childhood back into their language groups, back into their community, back into the lives of their family. I have seen on too many occasions the struggle, the pain on the returning individual family member and on the family members that live and continue to live on country. I've sadly attended funerals where those returning have taken their lives because they had been raised in a totally different environment where their connection to family, to country is something that they have struggled with. It is, there has to be another way of ensuring that individuals who are unsafe at any time of their childhood and those that provide care are provided with the care and support that they require to remain together with family, with kin and on country. It is a lifelong impact that not just the person who is removed at childhood and that person alone, but it is the whole family that has to live with how we create a supportive and caring environment for our loved ones to remain with us within our extended networks. Because we see for those who are removed, they are institutionalised. They live with people who they do not know. They live in places where they are not familiar with. They struggle to live with understanding what it is and why it is that they have been removed from everything familiar to them. So we collectively have to ensure that we work extremely hard together to ensure that we design structures, that we create processes and develop systems with the people, with the skills that colleagues, that can work far more effectively with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities and families and organisations to keep our families and our individuals needing additional care safe, protected, loved and close to those that love them and their right to be on their country. We cannot continue to support the current systems and regime that continues to traumatise Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people.
Commissioner, you've spoken in your statement about being concerned that statutory interventions by child protection systems may disproportionately discriminate against First Nations people with disability and their families. Did you just tell us why you hold those concerns?
Well, it is because of the fear that people have of approaching services where they exist in many regional and remote communities such as the Fitzpatrick Valley. The only active service that is here constantly is the Child Protection Organisation agency. And I understand that there is the mandatory reporting between the police, the education organisation and the Child Protection Organisation. So judgements made on the caregiving and the quality of care being provided by families who have access to no support will always be victims of somebody's judgement and will report people to those triage of organisations, which triggers the removal of children. So the fear held by families is real today, even in this community. We have got to change that being the reality that people are living with. We have to ensure that people have access to supportive services and alternative support that recognises that we need to invest in the lives of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander women and men, their families, to provide the support that's necessary. We have a right to expect these supports in our country, but sadly, today, that support does not sit on the horizon for many communities.
Commissioner, one of the points that I raised with you earlier was the issue of poverty. I want to ask you this. If you could comment, how do you see that poverty and poor living conditions, how they might intersect with disability and child protection systems for First Nations parents and whether that might create further vulnerabilities for those people?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people have experienced extreme treatment that has attempted to break our spirit, that has attempted to reduce our spirit so that we are helpless and we see ourselves as hopeless and hopeless people. I'm proud to say that our people have stood up against this absolute horrific violation and humiliation. And we have kept our spirit strong in the face of having our right to our country, to our traditional land overtaken by a foreign system of land ownership which has driven our dispossession as the owners and the first peoples who have turned the soil of this continent since millennia. We are still here. We are not extinct. We have survived as many of our people continue to voice in the public. The poverty of our spirit has not been erased whilst we have become people who have not been able to enjoy the fruits of our country, the resources of our country, where we have been subjected to being landless and our ownership of our land has not been recognised, had not been recognised until the courageous fight of Eddie Koiki Mauro and the plaintiffs. We have the native title system that recognises our connection to this land from time immemorial. We have had to demonstrate that to the foreign courts erected on our country, to demonstrate how we are the first peoples of this country. And the history of colonisation that has removed our rights to possess any material wealth in our country has caused our disadvantage, has caused our situations of poverty. We have got to change that. We have got to reconcile this country in a process of truth-telling, in a process of compensation for the theft of our right to not live in poverty in our country.
Commissioner, in your statement, you've observed that there's somewhat of a hypocrisy or a contradiction about a system, child protection system, that removes children for neglect when the environment causing the neglect is the product of the system itself. The issues that you've just spoken to about, are they the type of things that you're referring to as being the product of the system?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. I do believe, as an Aboriginal woman, as a grandmother, as a carer and as Australia's Social Justice Commissioner, that that is to be true. The dispossession, the treatment of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people since colonisation is the key driver of our marginalisation, our disadvantage and trauma that we are subjected to by a system that upholds and perpetuates the trauma that we live with daily, that we continue to experience the abuse, the negligence and the harm of a system that has harmed us since colonisation.
Commissioner, I want to ask you about some of the things that might be done, in your view, to address the removal of First Nations children from families and the over-representation in out-of-home care. You've talked about the need for there to be accessible and culturally safe disability supports in particular for First Nations parents with disability. Can you just tell us about that and how you would see that would be something that might assist in reducing that over-representation?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. I believe that the system is designed to respond to people living with unique and complex needs, whether cognitive, behavioural, physical, and in particular to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. It is the gift of these people born into their family that first respond to their needs, to the needs of these individuals. The external systems designed by others to respond to individuals and families of caregivers must understand that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people love their family members, that they are people who have a right to access and expect support from those external to their family. So if there's policies and entities and investments and institutions designed outside of our families for our benefit, we as a collective should be ensuring that all of our families have knowledge, have access to these supports so that we're able to provide the highest quality care to those that need it and to those that are providing the care. And so creating spaces for people who are delivering on the government's commitment to responding to people with unique and complex needs must be reminded and must be held accountable to invest in the existing strength that is present in our community, in our families and wrap the external support around the existing strength that exists in our families and our community. We are not seeing this sadly. We are seeing, rather, people being punished for their inability, it seems, with the judgement made by other external to the family to not be able to provide the hundred percent wraparound care. We cannot have people in position deciding the fate of our loved ones based on judgements that are being made without any engagement with the family, with those individuals and with the community organisations' guidance and support. That cannot continue to be the case because that is the only way we are seeing any response being provided to people with unique and complex needs in communities such as ours. We have to change that.
Commissioner, you've Commissioner, you've said in your statement that there should be a significant refocus and reinvestment from child removal into out of home care to preventative and empowering structures and services which support families. I want to ask you how you see that community decision making and self determination should be factored into that suggested proposal of how there should be a refocus and reinvestment?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. Communities are yet to see a willing representative of the system and the agency have the courage to champion an alternative pathway to ensuring children are protected and kept safe with family and community and to respect the rights of the child to remain on their country with their kin, surrounded by their culture. We have not witnessed that capability from the Child Protection Agency in this country. We have heard many, many families calling for an alternative pathway that ensures that families are engaged in a process of dialogue with the child protection authorities and their representatives. And I hope I am alive to see a time when we can do that. That is the only way we can truly respond to the holistic lifelong needs of children. To be supported on the country, to have access to their families, to their kinfolk, to their culture, to their country, that strengthens them as individuals, that ensures them a healthy, long life, immersed in everything that enables them to be strong human beings and adults into the future. The issue of removing children is something that is always seen as a first resort, from my experience. I have witnessed too many families grieving the removal of their children. I've witnessed so many families appealing to family law courts to have their children returned. I have seen too many people design legislation, policy, influence, investment, which is not the reality and the lived experiences that I see on the ground. I have seen these decisions made in total disregard for the strength of family, the strengths of community, and the rights of these individuals. That has to change.
Commissioner, I want to ask you about further on your recommendations and solutions for change in this area that you've spoken of. You've said in your statement that you encourage the Commission to recommend investment in culturally grounded, trauma-informed, strength-based services and ones that support the families, First Nations families, with those wraparound supports and services. Could I ask you, Commissioner, if you could just expand upon that and tell us what you see would be the critical features here for First Nations parents with disability, how they might be supported by those appropriate services?
Thank you, Mr Crowley. Part of the present challenge and problem that we experience is that that these situations occur and these decisions are made without any accountability placed on those that are making the decision. There is no accountability. There is no one who is charged with the responsibility as a watchdog, if I could use that term. That all of these acts, all of these decisions are made under the radar of perhaps those who might have some influence around holding people to account. I think if this Royal Commission could deliver justice and equality and fairness and respect for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people living with unique and complex needs, it would be to ensure that resources and capacities are directed towards First Nations organisations, such as the First Peoples Disability Network, who have expertise and focus and have people who are living in this reality and are supporting people in this reality across the country, that we are able to access a community-controlled organisation that is not afraid to speak the truth of the experiences of our people, but that they have capacity, they have the resources to be able to engage in our right to a quality of life, to have access to the services and support that we have a right to, and that we are heeding their advice in elevating the voices of our loved ones and community members and family members on what change looks like for people living with unique and complex needs. If we can have an outcome that is recognising our right to be supported through a strong community organisation that acts as a watchdog, that acts as an advocate, that acts as an evaluating, monitoring stakeholder that is accessible and has people situated right across the country in many of our communities and has a presence in our community, then I think we would have come a long way in serving a just outcome from this Royal Commission.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Those are all the questions I have for you. I just wanted to stop now in case, I expect the Commissioners may have some questions for you themselves.
Thank you, Mr Crowley, and thank you, Commissioner Oskar. Again, I shall ask Commissioner Mason, do you have any question?
Commissioner Oskar, thank you very much for coming to speak to us this afternoon. And you've covered quite a breadth of issues in your statement and in responding to questions today. I was interested in getting your feedback on the consultation you did through the Women's Voices Project, indeed, your work as Commissioner there in the Australian Human Rights Commission, about the place that we are at in Australia today in terms of the legacy of the past that is still with us, but what you see as the capability within First Nations communities to lead this change. Is that critical mass of organisations and people's leaders ready for this change, particularly for First Nations people with disability and parents with disability, particularly in the child protection system? Because my view is that that cultural acumen is so important in making decisions and in leading change. But do we have the critical mass of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to lead that change within the child protection systems today? Or is more work needs to be done to build that critical mass of leaders? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we have always stood ready and waiting. And the critical mass are there. Whilst we may have communities and organisations and leaders among the diversity of our settings across the country at different points of readiness, we must take an approach where we are making the step and demonstrating that we are listening and that we are prepared to invest. Whilst others may come along at a later time, we have got to show that we have listened and that we are making the change that's necessary and required. To wait until everyone's ready will send a very confusing message across our community. I think we must believe in the strength of those who stand and are willing to take and make the decisions around best practice, culturally respectful delivery of support which is designed by the families and the communities that are in need of this. Means that we are showing the community that we're making a stand, that we are listening and we are responding. And that we must learn from the diversity of our strengths and our settings and our experiences because we cannot take a one-size-fits-all response. I think the Royal Commission needs to ensure the diversities of our histories whilst common and shared as a collective. There are groups that are finding themselves in a different and new situation to those communities that may have experienced earlier some of these challenges and have responded and created the supports that they have in play. So we need to learn from all the diversities and all of the experience of all of our peoples and that we move away from responses to the needs across the board of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people's needs with a one-size-fits-all response.
Commissioner, I can...
Thank you, Commissioner Oskar. Can I ask you a question, very specific question? You talked about the children who had fetal alcohol syndrome now growing up and themselves having children. Are you aware of whether or not they are getting the kind of culturally appropriate wraparound supports that you were talking about? And if so, how is that provided? And if not, what has to be provided?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for the question. What started as the Lilian One prevalence research, the little ones, has now transpired into a new project called the Biggest One Kid Project, the longitudinal study of adolescents with high rates of trauma, prenatal alcohol exposure and fetal alcohol spectrum disorder in our community. The project itself, the Biggest One Kid Project, if I may, is a partnership between leaders of Monin Wondigora Women's Resource Centre here in Fitzroy Crossing, with doctors and researchers at the University of Sydney and key members from local government organisations, West Australian Department of Education and West Australia Community Health Service or Country Health Service. The objective of the project is, Monin Wondigora have partnered with researchers from the University of Sydney to follow up the Lilian One cohort in 2020, 2021, who are now around the age of seventeen, eighteen years, to identify adolescent needs and protective and risk factors for adversity in adolescents. The Lilian One cohort was a population-based cohort that included all children born in 2002, 2003 and living in the Fitzroy Valley. Sadly, I'm advised that those children who are now part of the Biggest One project have received little to no support in their response to their identified diagnosed needs. So as young adults, these children are said to be experiencing extreme mental health issues leading to suicidal ideation. And that's a huge and enormous pressure for this community. This project is continuing to, at the Biggest One project level, elevate the needs of what is required for these young people here.
Commissioner McKeon?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Oskar, if I may say so, as I've read your statement and listened to your evidence, I sense perhaps something of a paradox. The paradox, as I see it, is this. You're given a very powerful presentation of the terrible impact of colonisation on First Nations people in the 242 years since European settlement. The more severe the impact of colonisation through dispossession, discrimination, racism, deprivation of various kinds, one might think the more difficult it is to correct the effects of colonisation if you have described them in such stark terms. And yet there are parts of your statement that appear to be optimistic. And there, it seems to me, may be the paradox. How is it that you are optimistic, if you are, in the light of the severity of the consequences of colonisation that you have laid out in such detail and with such force?
Thank you for making that point. My response to that is I live with hope. I carry hope. And I must be optimistic that things will change. I believe in the goodness of humanity. I believe in the goodness of people in my community. in my organisation, in my family, that we can do better and that we will not have what others have done to us define us. I live with hope. I must carry hope, sir, for us to survive.
Yes, thank you. I think we share the hope. I think the problem that the Commission has is to determine what can be done in order to realise that hope.
We must work collectively. We must truly, genuinely guarantee a space for each other at the table that makes those decisions. We cannot continue to see others pretend that they know our reality and our suffering better than we know it ourselves. So our duty is to create the space for us as Australia's first peoples, with the good people of this country, to share in the dialogue, the challenge of deciding what will work and to be able to trust each other in that process.
Thank you, Commissioner Oskar, and thank you for your detailed statement of the work you have done and the evidence you have provided today. It's been a very stimulating session for us. So thank you very much indeed for your contributions to the work of the Royal Commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr Crowley, what happens now?
We have from witnesses today. And if we could adjourn for now and resume tomorrow morning with the next witnesses we'll hear from.
So we shall adjourn till 9.30 Brisbane time or 10.30 Sydney time? Thank you very much. We'll do that. Thank you. And thank you again, Commissioner Oskar.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.